The council did provide direction to its representatives regarding the terms and conditions of a successor MOU. Thank you.
With that, the closed session is now adjourned. We're now moving on to the blue agenda. This is the City Council of the City of Emeryville, a successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Again, all of us are here with the exception of Councilmember Atkin, who is excused this evening. And with that, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. [applause] Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Now, public comments? Next successor agency agenda? Any comments from the public? Okay.
Of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Nope. Okay, on to administrative items.
Evening. I will, I'll run through this pretty quickly. You've heard most of this already, but this is really our last step here in front of the successor agency on the refunding of our former redevelopment bonds. So, I won't go through the background here too much, except I just want to highlight the last two points because these are updates to the staff report. When we put the report in the packet, we hadn't yet heard back from the Department of Finance, but on July 9th, they did in fact approve the refunding of all of the outstanding bonds. So, that was great news. That was a week earlier than we anticipated. And then, on July 10th, we also received an outstanding rating from S&amp;P. We got an A-plus long-term rating with a stable outlook on the bonds, so all of that was extremely positive. As we mentioned before, the refunding of all of the seven bond issues will produce savings for all of the taxing entities, including the city. The initial estimates are, or were, that it would be about $100,000 annual, average annual savings to the city's general fund. We're now looking at that is probably going to be more than our initial estimate. So, wonderful news. Tonight, you're just being asked to approve the resolution that authorizes the following actions: to approve the POS and deem it final, and authorizes distribution to the underwriters of the refunding of the bonds and any other official actions that are necessary to consummate the issuance and sale. The next steps after this, we'll go ahead and post the official statement. We'll conduct the pre-marketing of the bonds to the potential inventor, investors. Next week, we'll pre-price and price the bonds, and then we are hoping to close mid-August and early September. And that's it. If you have any questions, happy to-
Questions from council? Any public comment on this item?
I just found some typos, as I always do, and I failed to mention them to you. Do you want me to tell you about them later?
If you want to just let me know, then I can fix some.
It's not in the resolution, so-
Okay.
It's in the other documentation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, are we still doing public comment?
I saw some people lift up a little bit. Anyone? No? Okay, go ahead Nora.
Yeah, I would just like to thank the staff and the committees who reviewed this very complex process. We're moving in the right direction on this. It's going to be a substantial bonus to not only the city, but the other entities. And with that, I move the resolution.
I'll second it. Anyone opposed?
Nope.
Great, okay. All right, thank you.
And do we also have to give authority to staff to move ahead on something else?
No, the resolution calls for that.
Okay, very good.
All right. We have no other items on this agenda, so with that, that meeting is adjourned. And we now move on to the green agenda, which is the Emeryville City Council Regular Meeting. I want to note that we're going to move some items around a little bit this evening. First of all, we have an addition under Special Orders of the Day. We'll be hearing from East Bay Mud. That wasn't in the original agenda. And then, after item, and I'll talk about this as we move through the agenda this evening, but after item 6.1, we'll do 7.2 and 7.3, grouping those things together. They're all of a piece. And then, we'll do item 7.1 before item 6.3, and I will remind folks as we go along. Okay? All right, with that, we have an update from East Bay Mud.
Good evening, Mayor, fellow council members. My name is Richard Harris. I'm the Water Conservation Manager for East Bay Mud, and thank you for the opportunity to come here this evening, just to give you a brief update on the drought, answer any questions you may have. Let me get this to a full screen here for everybody. I have about, oh, a 10-minute presentation. I can shorten that, but we'll go quick. I just wanted to give you a sense of what we're doing and the great response that our community continues to do every time we ask our customers to step up and respond. Wanted to share with you, I'm sorry, I guess I need a page down here. Where are we? Enter. This, this slide here really says it all. A picture does more than, than words, as we know. And the, the image on the left is January of 2013, and the snowpack in the Sierra Mountains that provides most of the water to the state water project, as well as the McCollumie watershed, where East Bay Mud gets about a little more than 90, 95% of its water supply. This is the same time this year, January 13th, a year later, with the snowpack. And this is an image we would typically expect to see after the snow year, well into the, the spring and summer. So, this is really why the governor announced a statewide emergency initially in January 17th, and followed that up on April 25th with additional declarations for state action. I'm going to talk a little bit about what the East Bay Mud Board of Directors have done and what we're doing to reach out to our community. I'm sorry about this. What this slide does here is demonstrate some of the rainfall and the precipitation we typically get. And the upper left is the McCollumie watershed, and what you're seeing here is the fiscal year, July through June. And the clear bars is typically what we expect to get on an annual average, or a monthly average for the water a year. And you can see that we ended 2013 very dry. 2013 was one of the driest springs of record. And then, we started this year with nothing near even a third of what we expected to get. So, it was getting very dire. In fact, the November, December, and January timeframe was some of the driest winters we've ever seen, and we did see an increase in demand. We've, we've saw what happened here. We had the Pineapple Express storms in the end of January, early February. That was a savior for us. We had 140% of precipitation in February in our watershed. And the lower chart here is, is the East Bay precipitation in our service area, and it's mirroring very closely what we saw up in the Sierra foothills. And again, February was very good. We got some in March, but it really has tailed off, and basically, the precipitation season is over, and what we've gotten is all we're going to get. We did end up with about a little over 50%, both in the watershed and here locally, from the historical average. But after being a third dry year, that's a challenge for us. So, as we put that into context, over here, 2014 is on the far left, and what we did is we looked at the 10 driest years we've seen in the East Bay watershed in our community. And so, this year is actually, we ended up right around 25 inches total, and that is the second driest year of record for our 80-plus years of record-keeping for East Bay Mud. And it's only beat by the 1976-77 design drought we use. And, and you can just see the other, here's here for reference. So, as we ended the rainfall water year, the actual water year ends officially at the end of September, September 30th, and then we begin October 1st for the next year. So, we are monitoring our supply and demand very closely. But being that it's the second driest, we have asked our customers to step up and to do a few things. I want to point out the third bullet here, and what really helps us in addition to rainfall is what we get in runoff from the snowpack. And typically, we would get about, and I'm sorry about the, the units of measurement here, but 750,000 acre-feet would run through the rivers into our reservoirs and into the East Bay. And we're projecting just a little over 250, or about a third. So, we need to really conserve what we have now, so we have a little bit of carryover going into next year, because we do not know what next year is going to bring. And so, we're projecting that the end-of-year water year storage is going to be somewhere in the 435,000 to 440,000 acre-feet. And our target, our annual average is about 600, and our target before we have to take some response in conservation is 500. So, we're going to be below that, and that's what we're, we're monitoring today. So, our, our plan of action actually is a multi-pronged approach. The first coming with our board action on February 11th this year, that was also reaffirmed April 22nd, to ask our customers for a 10% voluntary reduction across the board. We are, at this point, you know, not mandating anything, and we weren't picking reduction rates based on a certain customer class. We just thought, we're all in this together, and if everyone gives us 10%, and customers have been responding, we should get through this water year with some carryover going into the next year. And I have a chart that actually will show how we're doing. The other thing is, we're advancing our recycled water projects. We currently serve about 9 million gallons per day of recycled water to our East Bay community, and that's enough to serve about 200,000 households. And we're planning to increase that about another 50% by the year 2020, and more than double by the year 2040. One of the key projects you heard about in the, in the press and the media is our supplemental supply project on the Sacramento River with our Sacramento County Partners. This is the Freeport Water Authority. This was a designed drought, dry year supply project that we've worked for decades, and our community has invested in greatly, and so, we're, we're very happy that we're able to put it online this year to use it for the purpose it's needed. And then, of course, we work with our neighboring water agencies and partners to look at making sure that the piping network and the delivery of water through the East Bay and the North Bay and San Francisco Bay is inter-tied, so we can help each other out going forward. So, what this chart shows you is historical, going back more than 40 years, of metered consumption from our customers. This is total metered consumption. And what I want to just point out, you can see the 76-77 drought, where we asked customers to reduce, and they, they beat our 25% request with nearly 40% drop. Then we have the typical drought rebound. We had the long-term drought in the 80s, early 90s. Customers responded again when we asked for it. And then, we had the, you know, rebound that is typical. And then, here we are in the recent, the prior drought, 2008 and '09, with the economic recession. And again, our customers, so, have asked, we've asked them to reduce, and they have. So, here we are in this new drought, and we've asked for 10%, so we're not sure exactly where we're going to end, but we're continuing to monitor that. But what I want to show is that we are at probably the second lowest metered consumption since it was back in the 1970s. So, we've done a very good job in the East Bay with our residents and our businesses to make sure that we're using water efficiently on a per-capita basis.
And is this per-capita? Does, it doesn't account for the fact that we have greater population?
Sorry, backspace. No, and it does account for population.
It does, okay.
Sorry, since this is not my computer, I'm not sure how to go back here on this, but basically, that's total meter consumption, and over that 40-year period, we've actually grown by 300,000 population and about a 30% increase in number of accounts and service connections. So, we've really reduced our per-capita where it was back in the 70s, over 200 gallons per capita per day. And as of last year, we were at 137. And it, per-capita is a very, it's a difficult measure, because we take total production divided by total population, includes industrial and commercial irrigation, but that's a good metric. Real quickly, I just want to share with all of you some of our water shortage tips and some of the indoor things that we're doing, and we're asking our customers. This is an easy way, in a very short emergency, to deliver on a 10% request, even though people have concern, there's, we hear a lot about, I've done all I can, or I've conserved for a number of years. There is usually some behavioral measures you can take that are pretty easy, or look for leaks. We're finding a lot of leaks in our homes as our infrastructure ages and housing stock ages, and this is where they can really help. The one thing I do want to make sure I don't, I'm not missing reminding everyone, is our board did reaffirm that what we're asking customers to save this year will not be used in a future allocation, should we have to go to some mandatory measures if we have another dry year next year. We want to thank customers for conserving now. Outdoor water savings is really going to be a focus for us as we go into the warmer summer months, and that's a program that is actually very consistent across the state of California and our peer agencies. Outdoor irrigation is considered somewhat of a discretionary use, and there is room to stress a landscape without losing your landscape. And this is an area where customers can really respond, and we definitely want to work with overspray and runoff and any water waste. The other three thing is, we're providing a lot of information on our website. There's a lot of fact sheets and tools. We still have our free device giveaways, such as showerheads, aerators, and, and hose nozzles. There's a free home survey kit. We also have online restaurant table tent cards to ask for water upon, I mean, water provided upon request. We have hotel hospitality cards for, reusing your shower, your towels and your sheets again, as well as gym stickers for gymnasiums and health clubs. One of the things we're really bringing to our customers this year, for over a decade, we've been providing landscape water budgets to irrigation customers. This is where we use some real state-of-the-art technology that uses parcel information, aerial photography, local weather information, and we put it into a, a smart engine that combines all this information on a parcel-by-parcel basis. And then, we print free customized water budget reports for our customers. That tells them, here's what you used last time, and here's a target water budget for the months ahead. And this is something that we're actually planning to roll out to single-family residential customers this year. I won't take any time on this, but this is for you to take a few seconds to look for your favorite rebate program, but we are very aggressive with our rebates. We have to help our customers, and we do have a limited budget. It's not unlimited, but we can focus some of these things with indoor plumbing fixtures and appliances. And here in the green is our bundled outdoor program, where we're really looking on a lot of measures that could be whole home, whole yard, front, side, and rear, and try to do it together. This is probably our richest incentive, where you can get up to $2,500 for a residential account and up to $20,000 for a commercial account. I'm not going to go into detail. We work a lot with our peer agencies, the schools, and this, these materials, so we have these available for the community, other NGOs, other community groups that wish to have some materials, we can provide them. And as I mentioned earlier, we're working with our peer agencies. We've been working since 2005 on looking at the infrastructure of the Bay Area and looking where it makes sense. We have a number of interties with other agencies. Should there be an emergency, that water could be willed through the state, through various facilities, to each agency in need. And we are studying other projects, such as regional desalination and so forth, as well as regional recycled water expansion. So, that's what I had for you this evening in a quick fashion. I know that many of the, of you in the audience knows that the State Water Resources Control Board had a hearing today, or a board meeting, it's been in the press, and there, they did affirm some additional regulations that they're calling on all Californians to reduce water waste and prohibit some outdoor uses. It's not official yet. It has to go through the administrative law judge ruling, and we are informing our board. We'll be looking at it internally and addressing what they come out with as soon as it's officially public in the next few days, about what we need to do to respond to the state call for action.
Questions from council?
Yeah, I just have one or two questions. I have a house that has some, you know, what I perceive as valuable trees. And you said about stressing, you know, is there anybody that you can give a contact person or number to, so I can maybe call that person? Because, you know, I'd historically water these, these trees. How, how do I know how much I should cut back on watering those trees?
Sure. There are a number of resources, and you can even contact our office. We have some staff who are experts in that area, but the Bay Friendly Landscape Coalition has information about certified landscape professionals who work with water-efficient landscapes and what we call water management, water budgeting. There's also the University of California Extension that has a plant list that talks about how to deficit irrigate. If they're fairly mature plant, trees, you can really cut back. We're recommending that you water your landscape no more than two days a week, and trees no more than one day a week.
Okay. And then, the other thing was, I see highly efficient, but I, I travel a lot to Arizona, and they have the dry urinals there. Do you give a rebate for those, too?
Are you referring to the waterless urinals?
What, yes.
Yes, we do. And we, what we really like to do is work with any business contemplating this, because there's a maintenance issue with those, that technology, that you want to make sure that the maintenance cost for the cartridges doesn't outweigh the water savings benefit, but there's a way to do that efficiently.
Thank you.
Who else?
I just wanted to ask our city staff what the city has done, any steps that we've taken in terms of landscape irrigation and other steps.
Maurice is not here, but we have met and we did look at trying to cut back. We had some new plantings that we felt like, you know, we wanted to continue to water, especially the ones down the peninsula. But we've looked at what we can do in light of this. You know, you, like I, I think I had mentioned here a few months ago, that you may see the lawn go a little bit brown, so.
I was surprised, actually, I was driving in Berkeley on San Pablo today, and surprised that the medians were all brown, and I assume that they've chosen not to irrigate there. Didn't know.
Brown is the new green right now.
Do we have public comment on this item? Ken?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Yeah, the region has been very cooperative in saving water, so they had to raise the rates, because people save so much water. The one thing that really gets me is that if they would just design a faucet that had a little meter to measure how much water you're using, people would be able to really save. You'd be able to look at it and say, this morning I used so many gallons, and tomorrow I'm going to use less. And all these rebates, if you would just invest in this, in faucets, in ways of measuring the use of water, so that people know what they're using, I think would be a real incentive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris.
Should I close this out?
Okay, now is the time for public comments. This agenda?
Yeah, I have a public comment today, and that's about video. You know, seven months ago, I embarked on a project to create, post the city videos, divide them by index, and, and in the region. And so, and then I wanted to go back and capture some of the older meetings, which I've done, done the last seven years of the Planning Commission meetings. So, I made an arrangement with Sabrina to waive the $10 fee for the DVDs. And it's, I think it's worked out great, it's worked out to the benefit of the community. So, last week, I get this notice, well, we've adopted a new master fee schedule now, and you have to pay $10 for the DVDs. I mean, I wanted the city to post the Planning Commission meetings for years. You're paying these people $100 an hour to record these meetings, and then the DVDs just go on the shelf. So, I decided, well, let's make them public, let's get people involved. And, and the city decided to handle a school board, because we wanted to provide financial aid to the school, and we wanted to increase transparency. So, I started posting the school board meetings. So, a couple weeks ago, they had five meetings about LCAP. They had a special meeting on Friday, and, and the DVD, the information was really necessary to arrive at a conclusion that Wednesday. So, I tried to get it. Sabrina says, well, he didn't have a meeting. So, the guy went home with the DVD, right? So, he went home with it for three days, and I didn't get it till the following Wednesday. Oh, the district secretary's looking for it. Well, my contract says I don't have to provide it for three days. There's no urgency to get this out to the public. So, naturally, the staff doesn't like me saying, well, where's, where's the copy? Because I know people want to see it, and I'm trying to get that done. I spent hundreds and hundreds of hours doing this, and the staff hasn't got time to make one copy, and now you're going to charge me $10. Well, I'm not going to pay the $10. I told Andy Getz about it. He took $10 out of his pocket, he says, he'll go down and get the DVD. So, I'm going to ask the councils to please waive the $10 fee and to allow me to do just what I've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura McKamey, and I'm a resident and member of the B-PAC, and I'm here to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the city council and to, I wanted to just thank a bunch of staff for Love Our Neighborhood Day, which happened this Saturday and was a big success, and I know Mayor Asher was there. So, I'm just going to run down a list of names, and I'm sure I'm forgetting someone, and I apologize in advance, but Maurice Kaufman, Mike Roberts in Public Works, and Marcy Greenhut, and I think Rich Cunningham may have even got called on Saturday to wrestle with Caltrans about something. And I want to thank Councilmember Roberts for asking us really tough questions early on, that really helped us formulate what we needed to know, and Mayor Asher for poking me for years and saying, let's do this in Emeryville. And me saying, no, I don't think we can. So, I remembered that when the opportunity came up, and Councilmember West for always being supportive of this kind of events. And the Emeryville police who came out were just fabulous. They really had the spirit of the event. They were very positive in the light of a few cranky motorists who had not read their mail from the city, so they were very surprised to get up and find out the street was closed. And they, they did a great job of diffusing that and keeping the streets safe for everybody. And Adrian and Rochelle and Mike, whose last names I don't know, were, were in my area, and they were great. And Sergeant Joel Hannan was there, doing a great job, and Commander Kwan had a big smile on her face at the end of the day. And I think I might have even seen Chief James riding by at one point. I'm not sure. I know there were more police there that, whose names I don't know, but they all did a fabulous job, just making sure that traffic and pedestrians and bicyclists stayed safe. And I want to thank the city manager, Sabrina Landreth, and Ann Campbell-Washington, who really helped facilitate, and Ann helped us find signs when we were freaking out and couldn't find our no parking signs. And then, just the last person is Rozelle Loudon, who manages public events, who just was like helping us every stage of the way and was so tremendously helpful, spent a lot of time explaining how everything worked in the city and mediating for us. And we just, we couldn't have done it without all of, oh, and also the Fire Marshal Warren, George Warren, I think, is his name. And I'm sure there are other people that I don't know who worked on this in the city, and I just want to say, we could not have done it without all the wonderful Emeryville staff who contributed in one way or another. And thank you for the support of the council and for Emeryville. I think it was a really awesome, successful event. I was too busy sort of policing to get all the positive feedback, but I've been, we've been getting a lot of love coming our way ever since, out of people who really enjoyed it. So, we hope it becomes an annual event, and really happy to have Emeryville participate. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and everyone did such an awesome job.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Asher, and councilmembers Bob Cantor with the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. Actually, I had a comment more apropos to the East Bay Mud presentation you just saw. Councilmember West asked what the city is doing to reduce its water usage. It reminds me that we have a very active and well-respected green business program here in Alameda County, and many of our businesses are certified, and you have to go through a certification procedure to get it. You have to get recertified every three years. Our Chamber of Commerce is certified as a green business, and we also promote the program. The reason I mention that is, there's a water usage component. Before you can qualify as a green business, and that component is monitored by East Bay Bud, by Mr. Harris, and I think his department does it. It requires you to make, they, they monitor your water usage. You have to have the aerators on your, on your faucets, low-flow, low-flush toilets. You have to document that you're using alternatives to watering, you're, you're landscaping, like, sort of like Kurt's question about his trees. And you have to do that. So, the business community is participating. Not everybody is a certified green business, understand that. But many are, and we promote the program. So, the business community is participating also to help with water conservation as well.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments?
Somebody go? So, last meeting, last council meeting, you were discussing the idea of increasing our impact fees for, for businesses primarily, specifically like for new development, what have you. And as you know, Emeryville's impact fees are just crazy low, I mean, way lower than our neighbors. And so, what you're, have been discussing recently is the idea that maybe we could increase that to not quite as high as our neighbors, but closer to that of what our neighbors charge, which I think is a minimum of what we should do with the demise of the redevelopment agency and all the, the revenue that that brought us. We heard last time from Mr. John Nady, who's here tonight, who counseled against you voting to increase the, the impact fees. He said it would be, put the hurt on his Avalon project, which is a, some 200-odd rental units he plans on building on his property. And we should remember that that project he's proposing is 100% rental, zero ownership. And so, that's sort of a, an ill-advised project if, if, if we're looking for citizen engagement. The rental's been shown to be less effective for that. We should remember that Mr. Nady is moving his business out of Emeryville, so he's a former Emeryville business owner, or soon-to-be former, and so, that should enter into your mind as you decide about, listen to him when he tells you that you should not increase the fees. Also, we need to all remember that we have already given Mr. Nady a major gift of a property value increase back in 2000- property value increase back in 2009, I believe it was, right after we, we had formalized our general plan update. Mr. Nady appeared before the council and asked to have his building be let out of the constraint whereby his property cannot be built to higher than 55 feet. And he said he wanted to, I guess he wanted to increase his profits. And so the council listened to that, was moved by that, and granted Mr. Nady a special exemption from our general plan and enabled his property on the far north end of, of Emeryville to unlimited height, which, by the way, was counter to the wishes and the will of the people of Emeryville, because our general plan was the most democratically vetted general plan in California at that time. We got, as a matter of fact, we received an award for that. Some 25% of our residents went to the general plan meetings.
Thank you, time's up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, city managers report. Or no other public comments? I didn't see anyone. Okay.
Just one announcement tonight, we are hosting our summer concert in the park this Saturday at Doyle Hollis. It's going to be from 5:00 to 7:00. We will have food and drink, and the music will, let's see, oh, it's Cliff Bar's Band, the Grove Valve Orchestra, voted the best corporate band in America at the 2012 Fortune Battle of the Corporate Bands. So anyways, it'll be fun, come on out, like I said, this Saturday, 5:00 at Doyle Hollis, and it is free.
Wonderful. Is that it?
That's it.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Excuse me, I would like to pull item 5.8, please.
You want to oppose to all the rest of it?
Nope.
Okay. 5.8, go ahead, Jennifer.
Yeah, item 5.8 is a professional services agreement with the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce to provide services for $25,000, and this is a, a contract that we've had in place for a few years now. And after reading through the staff report, I had a few comments, things that we might want to consider adding, but also just a concern about needing the report from last year's contract before moving forward on this year's contract. If I recall, last year, we talked about having several measurable deliverables, and we've had some reports of all of the activities, but I feel like I didn't have enough information on this. So I would like to either table this until we have more information in order to make a better decision for me, or, well, and, a couple of things I would like to add perhaps to the contract is to have specific outreach to small businesses in town. I know that some small businesses are members of the chamber, but I didn't see anything specific in supporting small businesses. And finally, just asking our staff to manage the contract in a way that we feel like we're getting information back and accountability.
Mayor Asher.
Go ahead, Nora.
I, I think that's a good thing to hold it over, but what specific information are you looking for? We're asking staff to bring back information. Specifically, what are you looking for?
Well, what I saw, and excuse me while I jump to that item in our packet here, electronics can be slower than paper sometimes. In the contract itself, so last year's contract talks about the, I think it's four tasks that were the accomplishments. And in the new contract for this year, it, it includes a list of deliverables, such as, for number one, which is state-level economic development initiatives, it talks about the number of seminars held, or the number of businesses attending, the number of businesses participating. So specific, you know, again, in task two, I guess, the number of meetings held, and three, and I, I feel like that's what we discussed last year, and I just haven't seen a report from last year with those kinds of numbers.
Well, I, I think it's absolutely acceptable to ask for specific information, but could we also include, what are your additional requests to add to the contract?
My additional request was just specific outreach to small businesses in town, or what efforts have been made, I guess, to include small businesses, and if that's something I think the chamber is already doing, but just to call it out specifically, I thought would be good.
I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, that's fine, to hold it over. And then I had one question for, for Bob, since he is here. It says that through May 2013, 14, we've been billed $13,000 for the chamber services, and the contract for last, last time was 25, is that correct? So are there still outstanding, I hate to make you get up, Bob, but are, are there, are there still outstanding items that we're going to be billed for?
Thank you, Mayor Asher, and councilmembers, specifically, Mayor Asher, to your comment. And thank, by the way, thank you all for your kind notes and comments. He's getting better, my surgery went fine, and thank you, it's nice to be here tonight. Where's George, George Burns, what said, "In my condition, it's nice to be anywhere" tonight. Specifically on the amount of the contract, two things, Mayor, to answer your question directly. Yes, there's still as one month to be outstanding, but what, the contract calls for up to $25,000, and I'm glad, well, one last point, and I will answer, because it bears directly on your question. I want to make sure people understand, it's not a check that's handed $25,000 to the chamber, that's not the case at all. It's billed monthly at $100 an hour for up to $25,000, it may come in more or less than that. One of the original tasks in the contract was promotion of our enterprise own. Well, you all know what happened to that. So that took like 25% of our work away. We were doing a very good job in that, to be frank with you. We were busting our, well, we were doing a lot of work on that. It evaporated, so that took away, and we just can't make up more stuff. I mean, I do try to work with the staff to try to do other things, but the contract was the contract. So I think that there's one month outstanding. I did not get the June billing in because I left for my surgery before that, and a big chunk of the work went away because of the enterprise own.
Okay.
And I'll answer any other questions you have, and don't worry about getting me, I don't mind getting up.
I ask, since you're here. Thank you, Bob.
Is it, is it possible that, I believe, our next meeting, that we could consider this actually is in, early September, September 2nd, but that we could have some kind of tangible report on last year's activities at that time?
Yes, and that's a very fair question. I do submit a monthly timesheet every month. However, it's not well-organized, and it's kind of tough to get through, and to be fair, Michelle DeGuzman has asked me to do a better job of reorganizing the information to present it to you in a better format. That's a perfectly legitimate question, I'll work with Michelle to do that. The answer's sure. And, and yes, and that, that's perfectly legitimate. And one last point, outreach to small business, I, yes, of course, I suspect we do more of that than people are aware. And again, maybe that gets to your point about not, but we did have, just as a very good example, on April 30th, right here in this council chambers, we had a wonderful procurement fair that we brokered with the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory and UC Berkeley. We must have had 60 businesses here, no, not just from Emeryville, to be fair, the event had to be open to the public, because the lab and UC being public institutions, you could not close it. And of all the businesses that attended, 99% of all of them were small to medium businesses, not just one example. But I'm delighted to work with Michelle and Sabrina on any kind of outreach, continued outreach to small business, and present that to you in a better format, that's absolutely okay, and I have no problem with that at all, so thank you for asking.
Great. Okay, it sounds like then September is a good time to revisit. Okay, great.
Public comment on this subject?
Yeah.
I definitely have a few comments here. My first problem with this contract is that, well, when the city's providing this money to the chamber, what does that do for business people? If you have a problem with the city, they have a conflict of interest, they get a free office, and they get this contract. I mean, I think that's a real problem. You know, if we're going to do outreach, well, let me back up. As the founder of the chamber, this chamber was founded to bring the residents and the business people together, that's why it was founded. So if we're going to provide money for outreach, why don't we outreach the whole community? Why are we only looking at outreach to business people when we need to do a better job outreach into the whole community? I wouldn't have any problem with this if the chamber was what it was meant to be, and then you're providing money that benefits everyone in the city. But in this circumstance, I think there's a couple of problems here, and, and I think we need to relook at this. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm a small business owner in Emeryville, been here for, have my business here for over 30 years, and I would like, I am also a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to sort of take issue with what Mr. Cantor said regarding his outreach to small business, I'm, I'm just not feeling it. I mean, I think the, the chamber primarily is here to serve as a business lobbying group for large business, at, sort of at the expense of small business, frankly, is what I believe. I think we need to have a chamber, I think it's really important to have a business lobbying group for Emeryville, or, you know, entity, but I have a problem with the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce Incorporated, which is a private company, I just don't think they're delivering the goods. So we're giving them $25,000, and as Mr. Bukowski said, also a free office, that's coming from, you know, me and other taxpayers. And I just wanted to piggyback onto an item that Mr. Bukowski said earlier, where we're giving them $25,000 plus the office, and their, their services to the businesses are sort of lacking in my, in my estimation, but it's a very narrowed service-y, people, people are serviced a very small group versus, for instance, what Mr. Bukowski is doing with regard to these videotapes that he's copying from the city and then posting on, on YouTube, and he's doing editing, and so you can, citizens can go to the site, and you can see, read a little snippet of what you want to watch, and he's, and he's categorized it out, and that's a real service to the, to the people. So Mr. Bukowski's performing this business, or this service, at no charge to the taxpayers, and now, I guess he, he wants to have a waiver for the $10 fee, and, and since we're giving $25,000 a year plus free rent to the Chamber of Commerce with a very narrowed scope of, of Emeryville businesses, I think that we should go, we should consider that when we talk about a waiver for Mr. Bukowski's services to the, everybody in Emeryville for the video services he's providing, so long as he continues to provide it in a way that's not overtly political. And so far, in my estimation, has been not, that has not been the case. So I think we should, this should be an agenda item, and I think that we should vote to extend Mr. Bukowski, the minimum, a waiver of the $10 per, for copying fee, since we're paying this Chamber of Commerce $25,000. I mean, it just seems fair to me. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other public comments on that item? All right, we're going to move on to public hearings, and item 6.1, proposed City of Emeryville Charter.
So, good evening, Mayor. Tonight is the, is the second of two public hearings regarding the proposal of a, of a city charter, as well as the, the content of the charter. Starting back in, in April, there were, at a series of city council meetings, a proposed charter was prepared and presented to the council, and at the first public hearing held on June 3rd, the charter that met with the blessings of the city council that it wanted to see presented eventually to the, to the voters, was, was presented at that meeting, and that is the charter that's in your packet tonight. Again, as I say, this is the first of, or the second, rather, of two required public hearings under the provisions set forth in the government code regarding the adoption process for a city to become a charter city. After tonight's public hearing on this item, there will be a special meeting of the city council to be held on Wednesday, August 6th, at which time the council will consider the submission of the question of becoming a charter city to the voters at the November 4th election. Likewise, at that time, there will also be a resolution regarding a proposed real property transfer tax. The, the charter, as I, the proposed charter, as I mentioned, is, is attached to the staff report. The charter's basically very simple. The charter would provide the city with power solely with respect to powers over municipal affairs in relation to municipal revenues, including taxation and assessment, and assistance for the imposition levy and collection of a tax on the conveyance of real property. And further, the charter goes on to provide that, except for these charter powers, the city would still remain otherwise constrained in accordance with the, the general laws of the state of California. That really is the, the heart of the charter. Again, other than with respect to the powers of taxation, the city's intent under the charter would, that it would continue to operate in the same fashion that it has for all these years. And for any changes to that, to grant the city any additional powers, would require a charter amendment, which, again, would have to go before the voters. So at this time, staff would recommend that the public hearing be open for the council to take any public testimony regarding the, the concept of being a charter, as well as the content of the charter that's before you.
Can I request, Mayor, that, because we have two other items that relate to this topic as well, that maybe you could not close the public hearing until after we've considered those other items, if there's additional public comment?
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I, we, I would rather close the public hearing, just, you know, because those items aren't related to, or aren't required, I should say.
We can hear from the public on the other items.
But yeah, we, we certainly do want to hear those items in order after this one, though. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so now we'll open the public hearing.
Excuse me one second. I. I kind of can't be in two places at once, so pardon me for a minute.
Anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this item? The proposed charter?
For the charter city?
Yes.
I just assumed there's going to be some staff discussion, but like, since it's the second hearing, I guess not, is that?
You can speak now as part of the public hearing, and then when we consider the other items related to this, there will be another opportunity to speak.
Like, I don't know what the other items are specifically, but I'll just say this regarding the charter city concept, just for everybody here in the room, people watching on television, need to remember, what we're talking about here is putting this charter city idea before the voters of Emeryville. That's, so, we're, we're talking about letting the people of Emeryville decide about this democratic, democratically, and this is not, something's being put upon the people, instead, it's the people themselves are going to decide. So I think it behooves us to let the people decide whether or not they think this is a good idea come this November. Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? Josh?
Joshua Simon, I speak to you today as a property owner in Emeryville, and I just want to thank you for putting, for going through the motions to put this on the ballot. It's really a very exciting change. As a developer who works in cities around Emeryville, Emeryville has been hamstrung in many ways that our neighbors have sources of income that we simply can't have, and as a former school board member, I was shocked at how much less our, our taxes are than everybody else. So I think even after the tax, my understanding is, we'd still be paying less than everybody else, but at least we could afford basic services for the residents. And I think, at the end of the day, having basic services for the residents and businesses of Emeryville would be good for everybody, good for the businesses, good for, for residents. So I, I thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Josh.
Anyone else to be heard? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Does counsel want to weigh in before we go on to the other items or no? Questions? Okay, so the, go ahead, Jennifer.
Well, I'm never sure whether to make those comments now, or, because we have another item that relates as well.
We're going to move on to items 7.2 and 7.3. Do you, you can speak now, or you can say?
Well, I just recall reading Well, I just recall reading comments that were related to a blog post, I think, in, in our town, talking about how charter cities, there are lots of things that charter cities can do. And it's within the purview of the voters of that city to adopt additional items that are specific to that city. You have more power to do so by the voters. But it doesn't, the way we have constructed this charter city ballot initiative does not give, for example, a directly elected mayor, which you might see in other charter cities. It doesn't give other, other items that you might see. So, it's just important, I think, for the voters to understand the content, and I think that's what we're going to dig into a little bit more, of our charter, and how simple it is to really keep things the way that they are, with the exception of the real property transfer tax, which is the revenue that Joshua Simon alluded to. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. Otherwise, things are staying the same. That's why we made it so simple.
Anyone else? Okay, on to Items 7.2 and 7.3.
Yes, sudden change of PowerPoint, so I think, I can't see is my problem. I'm sorry about that.
I'm subcarried.
This should be the, this should be the newest one.
What do you want? This is the agenda for this meeting?
Okay, you want me to start?
No.
You can introduce, sir. Thank you all, sorry.
It's always interesting when I have to be several places at once.
We found a typo at the very last minute, and that's why there, all this complication.
So, counsel, I just wanted to give a little introduction to what will be transpiring next. As many of you know-
It sounds like it's, your mic's off.
It's not working here.
It's not working.
Is it working now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, as many of you know that on March 18th of- It's my name. As many of you know, on March 18th of this year, the council directed staff to initiate steps toward putting a city charter on the ballot, as well as a companion piece that would be, a companion measure that would be the implement, that would be putting a property transfer tax on the ballot for voter approval. You cannot, as a city, put a transfer tax on the ballot unless you're a charter city. And right now, the city is a general law city, which means we're organized and only have those, do, those powers that state general law allows. So, we began the process of doing that, and after this presentation right now, we will be going to ask the council for direction on putting those measures on the ballot for the November ballot. The council will not be able to take action until a meeting on Wednesday, August 6th. But we, staff is asking direction on the specific language and content, both of the charter, as well as the proposed transfer tax measure. So, as part of this, what often happens is that, to kind of determine public opinion and, and public concerns and public support for both the charter and the measure, because it is quite an undertaking to do so, the council also directed staff to engage the services of a consultant to do a citywide poll. And we have with us today Ruth Bernstein from EMC, who conducted that poll in May, and will be giving a short presentation on the results of that poll. And the results of the poll, I think, would be interesting for the community at large to hear, but it also might help inform the council as it deliberates about whether to go forward with the next step of determining the specific language for the charter and for the ballot measure that would then, that staff would then bring back on August 6th for their consideration for placing on the ballot. So, without further ado, Ruth Bernstein from EMC.
Thank you very much. I'll just take you through, we pulled together here some of the highlights from the poll. We don't want to take too much time going through all the detail. It was a fairly short poll, but I'll walk you through kind of the, the overall findings and some of the numbers. So, what we saw, definitely, we see viability for these two measures. We see, as, you know, we'll go through this, and a little bit of confusion about the charter measure, but definitely, as we explain it, voters understand it, and very strong support for both of them. So, we do recommend that you move forward with putting the, placing these on the ballot, because we think there's definitely support in the community. We do see the, the tiered rate and no exemptions are kind of key components that we feel like you want to move, include moving forward. So, what we did, just on the, I'm not quite being miked. You want me to get closer?
Just a little closer.
I'll just get a little closer. The, so what we did, a telephone survey here in this, in the, among voters, randomly selected voters in the city. We, we've been polling here for a number of years, and as you know, it's, we've told you this before, I think it's challenging to, to conduct a poll here, because there aren't that many voters. But we, so we do try to reach pretty much everyone. We were able to complete 151 interviews, and then we do feel like it's reflective, the demographics are reflective of voters who are likely to turn out. And you can see, we've done other polling here, preview, in the, in the city, both for the school district and for the city. So, you can see some, we have some comparisons of old data. For instance, in this first question, "Do you think things in Emeryville are going in the right direction, or do you think they're off on the wrong track?" And this is a very general optimism or pessimism question that we love to ask in all over the state. And your voters are like the happiest voters consistently everywhere. And I know, maybe not everybody in this room will think they're happy all the time. So, but we're amazed to see how consistent and how consistently positive this community is. 69% say things in Emeryville are going in the right direction. Only 16% off on the wrong track. I can tell you that this is not the case other places. In San Francisco, in San Jose, where I've polled recently, we have just over a majority say things are going in the right direction. So, in the low 50s, that's quite a bit different. And statewide, overall, I think it's somewhere around 24% think the state is going in the right direction. So, you can feel very proud of these numbers. I think this people in the community really like living here. And then also, on a positive note, we do ask, using a scale of excellent, good, only fit, or poor, please rate the following in Emeryville. And there's so much positive, we're only showing the positive here, because there's so little negative. The overall quality of police services, 47% rate as excellent, 39% as good. As you can imagine, some of the neighboring cities do not get numbers quite this positive. The quality of fire services, also overwhelmingly positive, 84%. Overall quality of life in Emeryville, 88% positive, 32% excellent. Overall quality of city services, also very, very strong, at 77%. And management of the city budget, 38% positive and 40% don't know. So, it's not a lot of negative, just many people are unclear. And looking at this historically, as I said, we've been polling here for a number of years. So, you can see, we've been asking these questions about overall quality of life, overall quality of city services, and management of budget. And you can see how consistent these numbers really are over time, and, you know, and that they've been consistently strong. Then, we did ask a number of items. We said, "How important are each of these to you?" And one of the things we're looking for is, you know, if people are going to approve an additional tax, we'd like to see where they think the money, not saying directing it specifically, but just generally, what do they feel like, how the city spends money, where, what do they think is important. And we see emergency services, no surprise, comes to the very top, 77% saying very important. Quality of public schools, 69%, very important. Maintaining open space in parks, sewers and storm drains, recreation programs for youth, bike and pedestrian safety, even the child development center, very strong. Basically, voters are saying all of these things are important. So, then getting into the measures, we did read, we said, we're, I'm going to read you some measures that may be on the ballot this November, and would you vote yes or no? And the first one is just, "Shall City of Emeryville Charter be adopted to establish Emeryville as a charter city?" Not a lot of information, so it's not huge surprise that 49% are undecided, say they're not sure. 34%, though, do, actually, we get a major, you know, more, a plurality saying yes. So, even with just that information, yes, and 18% no. But then we explain it. So, we say, "As you may know, some cities in California are organized under general laws of the state, others are governed by charter. Cities that are organized under general law have less independent, while the charter may adopt their own procedures, municipal affairs, things like that," and explain kind of what other cities are charter cities. So, after we give that information, we ask again, "Now, how would you vote?" And 71% said they would vote yes or lean toward voting yes. So, you can see, this is obviously a situation where we need to do a little bit of communication, but even with a little bit of communication, then the voters are saying, "Yeah, that makes sense. We want to be like Berkeley and Albany and Piedmont and other charter cities." Then we also asked about the transfer tax measure. We said, "To ensure funding to maintain essential city services," and you can read all of these here, the, all of these essential city services that we had just asked them about, police, emergency services, park, open space development, bike and pedestrian safety, childcare programs. "Shall the City of Emeryville adopt a real property transfer tax paid only by buyers and sellers of property at the time of sale, with all benefits, funds benefiting Emeryville?" 67% say yes or lean toward voting yes, only 29% no. So, very strong support for a measure, including the, such as where the money might be spent. Then we do give some additional information about, we said, "If these measures together, you know, if, if these two measures are supported for Emeryville, do you think these are convincing reasons to support the measures?" And the strongest arguments are really about local control. These measures would guarantee, create a guaranteed source of low, local funding for our vital city services that by law cannot be taken by Sacramento. All tax dollars will stay here. 48% say that's very convincing. "Emeryville residents enjoy the benefits of our clean, safe, and well-maintained city. Because our police and fire services are top-notch, Emeryville is a desirable place to live. These measures will help maintain excellent public safety services." 46% very convincing. And you can see, there's others here. It'll help to support youth services. "We need this money because Sacramento, we've, we've lost money because of redevelopment." All of these are all compelling, but really, the strong ones being, this is going to be our money to spend locally in our city on the things that we care about. After we give this information on the charter measure, so again, we ask, "How would you vote?" So, on the charter measure, we get to 79% yes. Now, that's after people have been kind of trapped on the phone and given a lot of information, but, and then on the real property transfer tax, we get to 86%. Again, after we've given them tons of information, but that is, you know, historically, in Emeryville, we do see strong support for revenue measures. So, what we see, we definitely recommend, our, our team together recommends proceeding with, with the measure. We think it makes sense. The measure, the way that we worded it, we think that includes the tiered rate, so that'll all be in, defined in the ballot book. We don't feel like it needs additional exemptions. And then, the, using the language that we tested in the poll, we do think makes sense. And we definitely recommend doing communication. Obviously, the charter measure on its own, if we just say, "Will you vote on this?", it's very confusing to people. And I think it needs additional explanation, not necessarily, you know, strong convincing, but definitely explaining, "What is a charter city? What am I voting on?" And the transfer tax seems to make a lot of sense to people pretty easily. So, we do see, you know, good numbers and very positive feeling from your community about this. And I can answer questions if you have any.
Questions from counsel?
Mayor, I just wanted to make one point, and I don't know if Ruth mentioned this earlier, but both measures would require just a 50% plus one-
50%.
Right, majority, so, just to put that out there.
That was in my head.
Anything from the public right now? Does anyone want to be heard? Yes, please come. You have to come up to the microphone, so we're recording it.
My name is Barb Singleton, and just, there was a, two pages on the website that I just read, and it said that, that the Lou Eggers Group found that the exemption wasn't favorable. Could you go into that more? What, sorry.
Oh, yes.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Anyway, this paper says that after talking to the survey- Sorry, also found that exempting properties selling for under $300,000 is potentially polarizing for constituents, with 51% of them supporting the exemption, but 42% saying they were opposed. Why were people opposed? I'm just curious.
We can't speak for why, because we didn't ask that kind of question in the survey, although I can, given our experience here in Emeryville and the other numbers here in the poll, our assumption is that, because there is very strong support for city services, that actually, there's a feeling of, "We're all in this together, we should all chip in," and that it's not necessary, necessary to offer exemptions, and that when you do start opening it up to exemptions, it becomes, "Well, now, who, so, you know, who do we, who do we offer them to?" I also feel like what we see in the poll is fairly strong support for doing this, and because especially, the transfer tax is not paid, you know, by every homeowner every year. It is kind of a one-time thing, and that it is really mostly on businesses. So, I, our sense from the survey is that voters just didn't feel like it was necessary.
Thank you.
Regarding the, the fee for the transfer tax that's going to be part of this charter city ballot, ballot initiative, I noticed that what's being, being talked about is a structuring the fee, so it's a little less than our neighbors in Berkeley and, and in Oakland. And I just, I don't know what the rationale for that is, frankly. And it's never been, there has never been a rationale, to my knowledge, put out for that. I, I just think we should operate the way businesses operate, and we should just charge what the market will bear. And I, perhaps that's the modus for determining that we should charge $12 per, per 1,000 square feet, instead of 15, as Berkeley and Oakland charges. But there's no, been no explanation of that. And I, so, I don't know how anybody's come up with the $12 figure. So, if we're just going on seat-of-the-pants or feeling, well, I think we should just charge the same as Berkeley and Oakland, and that would be 15. So, barring some evidence or some, you know, there needs to be some rationale for charging less, I believe. And I'd like to see the rationality. I'd like to see the, you know, just see a, you know, a cogent explanation for why we should charge 12 instead of 15. So, I would like to have that addressed. But other than that, I, I think it's a good idea, this whole, this whole affair. I think the people should be allowed to decide about this. Thank you.
Anyone else on 7.2? Okay, and now, oh, yeah, come forward to that.
Scott Donahue, 1420 45th Street. "Well, I'd like to offer a rationale of why 12 instead of 15. Our ratio of residents to business is unusual. We have a lot of people coming to our city every day. We can afford to charge less than our neighbors and still have a viable city, a dynamic city with lots of businesses. And I think because we can afford to do that, we might end up benefiting more in the long haul, because we'll have more business activity. And I think that could be a good thing for us going forward. So, the aggregate benefit to the residents could be greater." Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you. One of the concerns that I have about this real estate transfer tax for the City of Oakland is actually the tiered nature of it. I work as a tax auditor for the City of Oakland. It handles Oakland's real estate transfer tax. And one of my concerns is that with this tiered rate, there may be an opportunities for circumvention of this by using things like split deeds, where you would deed 50% of the property at the lower rate, the next day, put in a second deed for the second 50%, and still, would still stay within that threshold. So, really, that's my first concern about it. Also, I'm also concerned for our hard-working city staff here, in terms of their ability to audit it and, and take a look at the monthly remittances from the County of Alameda, to determine if that circumvention happens- if that circumvention happens and all the other things that need to happen with looking at real estate transfer tax. By having one rate, you take that whole thing out of the picture. You can simply look at the taxpayer's preliminary change of ownership, and with pretty good conscious know that they're paying the correct real estate transfer tax rate. That's really my first concern on this. I'd like to kind of follow it up on there, is, I would like to hear the rationale for having our rate lower than our neighboring cities. Neighboring cities are at 1.5% for $1,000 in gross receipts. I think if we look at the median price of our real estate in the city of Emeryville, you look at that, you know, we're right there or even above the city of Oakland. So I think that's the second point. Just as a suggestion to take a look, maybe as an alternative towards a tiered rate, is something like a low and medium rebate, in terms of the taxpayer or the buyer and seller pays the tax, and then if they prove to the city that they are lower mid-income, they get a rebate of a certain amount of that real estate transfer tax. So those are kind of my concern about the tiered rate, in terms of just the nuts and bolts for, you know, the finance staff that does such a great job here, and the rest is city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any further comment from council before we move on? Okay, on to 7.3. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I know, I have to change gears. Might eat her.
And so now that you have concluded the second public hearing, if, just refresh your memory, that in terms of the city charter, to be able to put on the ballot, there are some new state regulations that took effect as of January 1st this year, in which the council must have two public hearings, and then 21 days after the second public hearing, then that is when the council can consider whether to put a city charter on the ballot. However, since this is the last, this is the last date before the August 6 meeting due to summer break, staff is requesting that the council provide direction on the specific language of the proposed charter, and because there's also the interest in placing a transfer tax on the ballot, that we're also asking for direction on that as well. So the requested city actions, of course, then, as I said, is proposed language and ballot question for the city charter ballot measure, proposed rate structure and proposed ballot question for the real property transfer ordinance ballot measure, and then to direct staff, if you so choose, to prepare the legislation for consideration at a meeting on Wednesday, August 6, at 5:30, to place the city charter and real property transfer measures on the November 4 ballot. And the legislation includes everything from calling the election for ballot measures, directing the city attorney to provide impartial analysis, deciding whether or not to have ballot arguments and ballot rebuttals, and if so, what's the priority for which arguments would be placed on the sample ballot. We'll start with the proposed city charter. In your packet is a copy of the charter that was first presented to you on June 3, and the public had an opportunity to comment on that at the first public hearing, and it is the same proposed language for the charter that is before you today. So I'll just briefly go through the charter. It is a very short charter. It is literally two pages, which was council direction, to make it very short and simple and to the point. So I'll go through each article. Most of these articles are really just what I call, I don't know.
Boilerplate.
What? Just.
Boilerplate.
Yes.
Pro forma.
Boilerplate, boilerplate. And so Article 1 just establishes what the city's name is, and essentially just says, you know, it's still the city of Emeryville, and it's still the same boundaries it always has. And the second one is where the city's powers, if it was to be a charter city, are what they are. And so it really says that the city adopts the charter powers solely with respect to the powers over municipal affairs in relation to municipal revenues, including taxation and assessment, and a system for the imposition and levy and collection of a tax on the conveyance of real property with voter approval. And then it says, except for those provisions relating to essentially the taxation and assessment subject to voter approval, the city's powers are constrained by, subject to, and governed by the general laws of the city. So with the exception of being able to place a ballot measure regarding the property transfer tax on the ballot for voter approval, all the other powers of the charter would be the same as they are now in the general law. Of course, if at some point the public or the city chooses to expand those powers, they could do so, but it would take a charter amendment to do so. And a charter amendment has to go through the same process if the city puts it forward as the charter, which is extended public notice, two public hearings, and then a time of 21 days before that second public hearing, and taking action to put it on the ballot. If the community decides to put it on the ballot, then it requires a petition brought forward by 15% of the voters of the community, and at that point, then the council could place it on the ballot. So either way it goes, any powers other than this transaction fee, which of course itself will be placed on the ballot, would take the vote of the people to decide to do. So any of the things that were suggested, for example, or brought forth by Council Member West, if there was an interest in elected mayor, if there was, you know, anything, if there was an interest in public campaign financing, any of those types of powers would have to go through a charter amendment process. So the second, the third article essentially says that the city still has the same property, the same property rights, it has the same contractual obligations as it did when it was a general law city, and that's important just for continuation of business. You know, if there's any pending legal actions or proceedings, and of course, all the city's ordinance and codes and resolutions, like our general plan or the zoning ordinance, they're still in effect. Nothing has changed, just because we are now, if this charter city was, this city charter was adopted. Article 4, just again, kind of reiterates what is already the case. It says that the city continues, would continue to have a council manager form of government, and that the council would continue to consist of five council members elected at large for four-year staggered terms. And that the council's role is to establish city policy, and the city manager's role continues to be carrying out city council-established policy. So again, just like now. So that is the proposed language for the charter, and I would entertain questions or comments or direction.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, the direction is to put it on the ballot. The wording, you know, we've been down this path before, we've hammered it out, the wording is there, and I would suggest to my fellow council members, we move this thing along.
I'd second that.
So the.
Charter language.
Yes. So the motion would be to prepare the legislation that comes back on August 6 with the language that is being presented right now, that would be the language that would then come back to the council for consideration of placement on the ballot. So you're not actually voting to place it on the ballot now, but just what language will be part of the proposed legislation to do so. So that is Councilmember Davis and Brintman.
Karen, can we get to these, can we get to these directions from the council after you've done your presentation and the public has had an opportunity to comment?
Sure. Okay. We can do that. Okay. Do you want to, should we do the council, the charter? I thought we already had comments from the charter, that's why I was going ahead, but fine. Okay. So then the second piece of this is the actual ballot question that would be placed on the ballot. And so the recommended ballot question, and this is something that is recommended by staff, including the city attorney, would be, he's the one who writes the ballot questions for consideration by council to place on the ballot, is to enhance local control over funding essential city services, shall the city of Emeryville charter be adopted to establish Emeryville as a charter city with the ability to adopt a local real property transfer tax subject to voter approval? The city council's powers otherwise remain unchanged and are limited by state general law, and any other powers as a charter city would have to be approved by the voters. And this is about 69 words, and the question can be no more than 75 words.
Mayor Asher, I have a question. This was exactly the wording that was used in the polling?
Not exactly, in the sense that the polling didn't actually have a ballot question. It more gave some very general information about the charter that emphasized local But it's based upon the polling results, and it's something that the city's consultant that conducted the poll felt was in line with what the polling, what the poll, what the polling question was.
Do you have a concern, Nora?
No. I thought, though, in the presentation from the pollsters, that they asked to use the same language.
In the transfer tax, it was the specific ballot question.
On the transfer tax?
Yes.
Okay. No, this, I feel this was quite clear, and that we should go ahead with it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Is that what you're looking for, Michael?
After we hear from the public.
After we hear from the public. Yeah, I thought on this we had, but I guess not. Okay. So we, do you want to do the charter, ask questions if the public wants to comment on this before going on to the transfer tax?
Let's pause for a second to see if we, anyone from the public wants to be heard at this time.
Okay.
Thanks, Karen. Anyone? Thus far?
Don't go away, Karen.
Yeah, Karen, you may have to come right back. Okay.
Okay. So do you want to, at the, do you want to go through all the actions at the very end?
Yes, please.
So then we'll move to the proposed real property transfer tax. I have lots of pieces of paper here, so. So for the property, real estate, for the proposed real property transfer tax, in your packet, there is essentially the template for the, for the real property transfer tax ordinance. And again, most of the language there is boilerplate. And so there's really just two sections that council is asking for direction. And that has to do with the actual imposition of the tax. So it will be both the effective date, it will be the tax rate, and then it will be whether there's any exemptions to the tax. So those are really the three that we need your direction on. The rest is boilerplate. So we'll start maybe easy, we'll see. So the first issue is that under the, under the section on tax imposed, the copy that you have now didn't actually include an effective date. And so what staff is recommending is that the effective date, when we bring it back to you in August 6, that the proposed language includes that the effective date will be effective in accordance with the provisions of the California Elections Code. And what that means is that the ordinance, if approved by the voters, would be considered adopted upon the date that the vote is declared by the legislative body, and go into effect 10 days after that date. The council is scheduled to accept certification of all the election results at the December 2 city council meeting, and then therefore, the ordinances would take effect on December 12. That would be really the earliest that this ordinance could take effect. Alternatively, the city council could set the effective date as January 1, 2015.
I would say just go with December 12 if that's.
Absolutely.
To do.
Okay. So I guess the public's heard that, and will take, I guess, a more formal, this is more of a straw vote, right?
Right.
Okay. So the next gets into the meat of the matter. And that, the same section, it now has the actual rate imposed. So staff recommends the city council adopt a tiered tax rate as follows. And that would be for the first $300,000 of property sale value, that the proposed tax rate would be $8 per $1,000 of property sale value. And again, this is the language that would be coming back to you for August 5. And then after the first $300,000 of property sale value, that it would be set at $12 per $1,000 of property sale value. And I do have a little background information that I'll quickly go through, and how much you want to dig into, that kind of depends, I think, on you. So here's some comparisons of other charter cities. And every charter city in Alameda County has a local property transfer tax. None of them have tiered transfer, tiered transfer taxes. So they raise range from a low of $4.50, $4.50 cents per thousand of assessed value in Hayward to $15 per $1,000 of sale value in Berkeley and Oakland. And I will say, having bought a house in Berkeley, that it is very typical that that amount of, that the tax, the transfer tax is split, is shared between, is part of the negotiation between the buyer and the seller. And I remember when we bought our house, it was a 50-50 split. So this is a little bit small, but I thought that there might be some interest in what does that actual look like? What does that, what does that actually look like? And so for an average, let's say, the average cost of a residential unit in Emeryville is about $300,000, and so that would be $2,400 of property tax, as I said, it's generally shared between the seller and the buyer at the point of sale. And I did that at the $8 rate, but what I also gave you is some other samples of what it might look like, including a $1 rate, just so you can kind of, if you wanted to, you know, get a sense of what that might be if you added or subtracted from the staff's recommendation. Then I also looked at kind of what I would say is kind of more of a typical commercial property, or larger value property. It's not a split role with a different rate for residential for commercial. It really is first thousand versus more, but, you know, there's not too many $10 million homes in Emeryville, and I don't know if there's too many $300,000 commercial rates. And so, you know, most of the residential sales will probably be somewhere between 3 and 400. I think the highest one I saw was about $600,000, with the commercial rates widely varying. And so for a $10 million property, at the $12 rate, it would be $120,000. It actually would be a little bit lower than that, because the first 300,000 is indexed, but the actual amount, it's because it's the differential, you know, so it's a little bit lower than that. And then if you want to look at what some, what would this kind of bring in terms of revenue, I looked at kind of what we currently get. Currently, the property transfer tax rate is what is kind of mandated by the state and the county, which is $1.10 per $1,000, of which the city of Emeryville receives half of that, or 55 cents. So I looked at the year of 2013 and through May of 2014, which is the latest that I had, and you could see that in 2013, for example, the city received somewhat over $40,000 in property transfer tax, based upon the state mandate, kind of what we are able to do under a general law city. And if you saw, if you looked then at the, and I, it was really difficult without going transaction by transaction to kind of look at first 300,000 versus not, but you could very easily look at residential versus commercial. And given that our residential properties are averaging about 300,000, it gives you a sense of what the first 300,000 would give you. And if, when we get to the commercial, you'll see that our commercial property sales in Emeryville vary so much that they average one or two sales per month, but actually there were several months there were no sales at all. So it really is difficult to get a sense of what that first 300,000 would be, because, you know, and also depends on the amount of the property. I mean, if it's a large, if it's a large property sale, it's such a small amount of what that rate is, is that first 300,000, that for the purposes of, I think, making a policy decision, unless you direct us to bring you back more, I think this gives you kind of a sense of it. So for, so the proposed lower tier for the first 300,000 that staff is proposing would have. have last year brought close to $600,000 in property sales as opposed to the 40,000 that we received. And to date, we would have, the city would have generated $735,000 for that first 300,000, so to speak, as opposed to the 50,000 that we've generated through May. And again, as I said, commercial property tax is so variable. I have a slide that I didn't put as part of the presentation, but I could bring back that you saw before, that we had, you know, one year that commercial property sales was, you know, 70 million in 2010, and then the, I think, like, two years later, it was one point, almost 1.2 billion. So it's a huge fluctuation in commercial, and it makes it very difficult, I think, for the city to consider budgeting that as on, for operational money. But kind of residential, it's kind of what I call the bread and butter transactions. It's going to happen. So that gives you some sense of what that is. And I also then did it at the $1, so you could get some sense of what the variation would be in terms of revenue impact. And then, because you might want to talk about these together, the other issue in the same section on tax imposed is what's called a de minimis exception. And if you have any questions about that, I am definitely going to bow to our city attorney. But essentially, staff is recommending that there is an exception for sales under 100, it's under tax rate, it's not under exceptions. And that the, what it is, is for those sales that are under $100. These are typical, I would say, from what I have been hearing, for transfers between, let's say, a parent and a child, that rather than waiting for, you know, something to go through probate after the parent's death, that there is a, you know, while we're still living, I will transfer this property to you, but to make it a sale, there's a small de minimis monetary amount that is part of that transaction. And you certainly could not make that exception, but for the $100, you're talking about 80 cents in just the administration fee, the administrative cost of having to process a, you know, 80 cent transaction fee doesn't seem to, in staff's recommendation, is to not do that. And this is purely for those, you know, really, it's just exchanging hands rather than going through probate type of deals. But you don't have to do that, so that would be option two. And then, the other section that we're requesting direction on are other sections regarding exceptions or exemptions. And most of these sections, 3.3-3705 through 3.3710, are all statutory exceptions, ones that you have to do. Again, I'll bow to the city attorney to get more into that, but it has to do with, for example, foreclosures, you know, that type of transactions. The state prohibits transaction fees being placed on those kinds of transactions. But there is one, I would say, I guess discretionary or policy-based exemption that staff is recommending, and that is exempting transfers that are within our restricted affordability units, and to not place the transfer tax on that, because that would be just an added burden on, on the affordable housing program that we have, that either the city would end up providing additional money for, or the low-income buyer would have to come out of pocket. So we are suggesting that, we are recommending that that be the sole exemption other than that, that is statutory.
Karen, is all this verbiage going to go on the ballot?
No. We will get to the ballot question. Oh, it'll be the ordinance, and then there'll be a summary of the ordinance. But the ballot question will, again, it's limited to 75 words, and there it is. It's to ensure funding to maintain essential city services, and some examples are given. Shall the City of Emeryville adopt a real property transfer tax paid only by buyers and sellers of property at the time of sale, with all funds benefiting Emeryville? That's the question. But the full ordinance...
This was the one that was read during the poll?
Yes, this was the exact...
And that received such...
The 89% favorability rating. This is the exact language that was used for that poll.
So this will be on the ballot?
On the ballot.
All right.
In the ballot, what do you call it? The ballot, the sample ballot, there would be a summary of what is, you know, several pages for the entire ordinance, and then the ordinance itself would be attached. So the kind of detail that we're asking you for would be part of the ordinance, that would be part of the ballot pamphlet, and would be, and there'd be a kind of an executive summary of that also.
But this is the only thing that will be on the ballot itself?
Yes.
This question?
Yes.
Okay.
So we can go back up to, so, again, so we're asking, I don't know if you want to have some discussion first, before you have public comment on the transfer tax, and then kind of go through the whole thing, whatever is your pleasure, Mayor Asher.
Does anyone have questions for Karen, and then we'll have, hear from the public very quickly? No? Let's go ahead and hear from the, from the public then.
Okay, so I'm going to just put kind of what the actions are, and then I can go back and forth if needed.
Okay, thank you, Karen Schur. Anyone to be heard on this item?
Bill Reuter.
I'm going to take notes for this.
I'm interested in the problems that might result from a split tiered, that is, the de minimis exemption clause. A point raised by a previous speaker, I think had some knowledge of that process being operated in the City of Oakland. Let me ask the staff and the city attorney, any worries or concerns that that system might be gamed by people transferring property?
Do you have an opinion on that, Mr. Biddle?
Well, I can never predict what people are going to do. But I don't think it has to do with the de minimis exemption. That is just really to essentially exempt the first $100,000 of value, so that you allow for, you know, transfers, you know, gift transfers from family members, sometimes also...
You mean 100, not 100,000, I think?
Did I say 100,000? Sorry. $100.
You got me worried. Okay.
And then also sometimes deeds are done to clear up titles. Sometimes you might, you know, a young family might buy a home, and their parents had to be on title with them to qualify, and then after a while, they, you know, the parents get off title, so there's a deed. So, and then you just show that there was consideration of a dollar or $10, so we're not intending to address that. But in terms of the split, you know, tax amount, whether people are going to try to game that by preparing two different deeds to transfer a partial interest one time and then another, you know, I suppose you can have people trying to do that. I can't say I've ever seen that. Of course, we haven't had the experience of actually administering a transfer tax. Perhaps Sabrina, who's been in Oakland, maybe she has some experience.
I do not have a tiered rate.
Right.
Right. And most jurisdictions that, well, that you saw in Alameda County, and then also of various ordinances that we've looked at in terms of crafting the ordinance, most jurisdictions do not appear to have a tiered rate such as that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Judy Timwell, resident. I'm concerned about the tiered rate. I think that we've seen from many examples here in Emeryville, how, for example, Pixar appears not to be doing any business in Emeryville now. They're doing it all in Southern California to avoid taxes. I can see that this would happen with, with regularity, that people would try to avoid wherever possible, not necessarily someone selling their home to someone, but, but in the case of businesses. So I don't see why we, I can understand wanting to exempt people with lower-cost housing, but I, I think it would create a lot of issues and problems for the staff, and shouldn't be done. Thanks.
Thanks, Judy.
I would also like to join with the two previous speakers who expressed some concern regarding the tiered option. I listened to the gentleman from Oakland who spoke, and frankly, it sort of spooked me a little bit. And I, we have, as Ms. Timwell just noted, we have seen this city be hoodwinked by clever, you know, attorneys working for billion-dollar corporations in the past. I mean, to see that this started sort of happening with, because of unintended consequences from this good intentions of the tiering idea would be, you know, cause a lot of cynicism, it caused a lot of distrust in government and disgust in government. And since no other cities around are doing it, I think you should strongly reconsider, if it's not too late. I mean, if, I would not want any change in this regard to negatively affect the whole program. But insofar that you can consider, reconsider the tiered idea, I think you maybe should try to do that with little time you do have left. And then, once again, I would like to say, the $15 rate per $1,000 is the rate I think we should charge, because we are sandwiched in between those two cities, and we have not, it doesn't seem to be any rational basis that has been presented for us to charge only 12. And without, without a rational basis, I just don't, I think we should just charge what other cities charge, and that seems to be more rational, barring some explanation for the 12. Thank you very much.
Yeah, hello again. First things first, I'd like to clarify my comments for just a moment here. I, I don't want to say that anybody would game the tiered system. I've never worked under a tiered system, so I don't know how it would be administered and work in the real world. It's just one of those things, I took a look at, it's a possibility of being an unintended consequence. I don't know if that's going to be a fact or not. Really, my, my overall concern on this is that, first, I'm very much for a charter city and a real estate transfer tax, what the revenue that can provide for local cities, and my, and my personal city, it's huge for me. I just want to, I'm just here to kind of make sure it's done right, and, you know, for example, the, making sure that the rate is done right, because we know how difficult it is to increase the rate after we, after we actually get it passed, passed once. Also making sure, and I know staff's working on it, they do a great job here, looking for a lot of these possible loopholes, for example, possibly on the tiered rate. My last comment that I do want to bring up is to, is to take a look at actually what a transfer tax is, and that if the City of Emeryville puts it just on the buyer and seller, that may not capture things like mergers and acquisitions. And I haven't read the language in the bill. One of, it does, yeah, and that was one of the things that I really wanted to make sure, that that was a huge loophole that City of Oakland went through. So I just kind of want to clarify my comments, and once again, just, I know the staff's doing a great job here, going through it and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Joshua Simon, I just wanted to put some numbers to this, because that always helps me with decisions. So the difference between the 12% and the 8% is about 4%. That comes out to about $12,000 on a $300,000 sale. So it means that, you know, the difference would...
1,200.
Hmm? 1,200, thank you. Even better. So we're talking about a small amount for the taxpayer, but I think we're talking about simplicity for city staff and simplicity for, and I'm glad city staff is very good with the numbers. So, so, but, so I just want to encourage simplicity and encourage uniformity. But I also like the idea of having some process for hardship, because there might be some. And I know that when we did the parcel tax for the schools, we had an exemption for seniors. But I think having some sort of process for, you know, if there's a public benefit, to have an ability to come back, and I think that could possibly be done as follow-on legislation. I don't know if that's needed within this, but, but there are rare cases where there are public benefit transfers where the tax actually has an impact, and having an ability to come to the council and ask for a rebate of the tax under specific public benefit situations might be of value.
Anyone else to be heard? Okay, can we have the questions back up? Thank you.
I feel that was a multiplicity. Okay. I'm going to go up to the beginning, because you might want me to scroll down.
Izzy.
Okay.
Okay.
So the first question, if, I would suggest maybe dealing with the city charter, because that really undergirds anything, anything later?
I'd like to move the language that we already have.
I'll second that.
Okay.
The longer with explanation included.
Yeah.
That we were shown. I approve of that as well.
Okay, so that is for, well, one, I guess, is it for the proposed language and ballot question?
And for the ballot question.
As presented today?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone oppose? You okay? Okay.
Ora?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's for the charter, language, and question. Okay. Now we can go to the real estate transfer tax. So then, I guess, we'll start first with the effective date. And so, staff was proposing as soon as possible, which is, would be the December 12th date, which is essentially following Election Code. Alternatively, you could set it as January 1st. I mean, you could do something else as well, but those seem to be...
I prefer it's December 12th.
Yeah. And I assume that if, for some reason, there was a hookup, and we couldn't accept certification of the election results at the December 2nd meeting, it would then be delayed to the next meeting or something.
The word would be effective according to the provisions of the Elections Code. And so, that December 2nd meeting, I think, is technically like, maybe like 29 or 28 days, and the, and the registered voters has a full 30. But the likelihood that it would take the full 30 days to certify Emeryville's elections are pretty small.
Minimal. The only problem is there's some amount of uncertainty, and I know when we come into, you know, financial matters, it's nice to have certainty, so I've just put that far.
Well, the default would be, is that if for some reason it was the December 16th meeting, which would really be the last, the latest meeting that would be, then the effective date would be 10 days after that. Because what will be in the ordinance will be with the provisions of the Elections Code. And that part of the Elections Code says that it's upon the date that the vote is declared by the legislative body, and 10 days after that.
So my concern is that the, this is what is published as all the extra information for the voters, I assume? It's in the booklet, and it has the full, the full language from the ballot measure? Is that correct? And there wouldn't actually be a date there?
No, the dates wouldn't be here. This, this, what's in the light blue is essentially what would be in there, that the effective date is, is, is that, that's in the provisions of the Elections Code. That would be what would be in the ordinance. This is just explaining what was in the code.
I understand. And what I'm saying is that when someone reads what's in blue there, there is no date. Like, it's just confusing. You have to know a lot in order to know when this takes effect. And so I'm just saying, in the interest of clarity...
That's what you're saying.
If you actually put in, you know, January 1, which is all of, you know, two and a half weeks later, it, people could look at it and say, oh, I know when this takes effect. If someone's selling their property, they don't know what that blue one means.
I agree.
You're saying the alternate.
I am, actually.
I was not following you.
I'm sorry. So I'm saying, I think it's a little confusing to have all the language and having it tied to the Elections Code, rather than just having a date for people.
Yeah, I agree. I think January 1st makes sense. That's when most laws go into effect, and so many people just relate to that date. So I think it's a lot cleaner to establish that date.
Motion is second, and a vote?
Yeah, I'll move the January 1st, 2015.
I'll second.
You want to oppose?
I oppose. I want to go for the 12th.
I want to go on the 12th, too. I don't, I don't think that people are concerned about when, when the date is, that the, you know...
Then why don't you guys just make it January 1st, if you're not concerned?
No, I don't think that voters are concerned. Like, I don't think not having a date is going to sink this.
Think of all these people that do... They give all these people that do things for tax reasons before January 1.
Exactly, and that's what I'm thinking.
They'll do it before December 12, too, so.
There's no way we could put the date December 12 because that's not a guaranteed date, correct?
How about you could put the earlier of January 1, 2015, or that as established by California Elections Code 9217?
Good weasel words. That's great.
That would be fine with me.
There's some date, but it can be the 12.
It'd be the earlier of those.
It would be the earlier of those.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll support that.
I'll support that, too.
Okay.
Election code for January 1. And motion is second by-
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second, Davis.
Is 4-0, it sounds like.
Yeah, it is.
I'm trying to make notes.
I know, we know.
That's why Ken's videotaping back there.
Somebody give Ken 10 bucks.
Yeah, you do owe him $10 tonight, Karen. It's your night to pay.
This is going to be, this is being on ETV as well as streamed live and archived and timestamped. And that will be available to the public and archived starting tomorrow. And it will also be rebroadcast on ETV, I think, at least two, two or three times this week.
Moving along.
Okay, so, then it's a matter of the tax rate, tiered or not tiered, and what the actual dollar amount is.
I propose we eliminate the tier.
I second that.
Go straight with 12 bucks.
I'm in support of that.
I would, too.
You got a winner.
So, 12, no tier?
Yep. And that's roughly, I think, Sabrina, it's going to be about a 10% increase in a general fund, depending on the year?
Yeah, close to.
What we can look at really closely is-
Depending on, it's like-
But, just to clarify, we probably cannot budget for that, just-
Oh, no, no, I'm not, yeah.
And to change that tax rate from $12 would mean going back to the voters.
Yes.
Correct.
That's right.
So, if you see at the very end here, and I don't know how I get back to having the big squeak, the big squeak.
That's okay.
Okay, is that I do have for $12 what it would have been during the various years, and that's in your packet. So, for the low year, it would have been 845 compared to less than 39, and the highest year, it would have been almost 13 and a half million compared to 600,000.
A step in the right direction.
Step in the right direction. I don't know what just happened to my computer screen, but we'll deal with it. Okay, and then, then the next is the ballot question. So, I think that's all we, oh, we need to know about then the de minimis exception.
I don't have a strong feeling about this. It seems like the rest of council doesn't either. If it's not, I mean, in some ways, it's more complicated to put the de minimis in place, in other ways, it's less administrative burden for small things, so.
I think it's an administrative burden and I hope we don't proceed with this.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
We're not talking about a lot of impact or money on the individuals.
And it probably is very few properties per year that would fall under this as well.
So, staff recommendation or option two?
I heard option two.
Is that what you were moving?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll, did you make a motion or?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right. Anyone opposed? No.
Okay, and then? Get to that. Yes, that one. So, the other one would be exempting affordable action, affordable-
I make the motion.
Those within the city's affordable housing program.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay. And with the exception of the statutory exceptions, then that would be the only other exception? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. That's correct.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. And then, the ballot question, and this is the one that was-
Yeah, I'll move that ballot question.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Anyone opposed? We got it. Okay.
Ballot question. Okay. And so, then the only other thing remaining is for direction regarding, I would assume the answer is yes, but just to ask, that we then, that your directing staff to return at a meeting on Wednesday, August 6 with all the legislation necessary, all the draft legislation necessary.
Phil moved.
Second.
The rate is $12 with no tier.
$12, we just, we voted.
With no tiers.
No tiers.
And I just want to point out to the public, it's a Wednesday. We don't normally meet on Wednesdays, but we are meeting Wednesday, August 6 at 5:30.
That was a motion by Councilmember Davis, who's second by-
Asher.
Asher. Anyone opposed? No.
Or get ready to put on the ballot.
Yes.
So, we will bring back for the Wednesday, August 6 agenda, all the legislation to put both the city charter and the proposed transfer tax of $12 per 1,000 of sale value. We'll put that on the agenda for your final consideration and action.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to be heard, Colleen, or no?
Just to, Colleen Crowley from the Lou Edwards Group, I believe we needed to make an adjustment to the ballot question if-
It's okay.
It's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. Okay, all right, now, winding our way back to item 6.2.
And Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this item because I live within 500 feet.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is a consideration of a request from Build Group to waive the city's noise ordinance for weekend work at 1303, 1315 and 1333 Powell Street. And Assistant Planner Sarah Billing will make the staff presentation.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep.
All right. So, this is a noise waiver item for 1333, 1315 and 1303 Powell. This is located on the south side of Powell Street between Powell, Stanford, Doyle and Hollis. This is a mixed-use residential project under construction. The noise waiver request to have Saturday construction, whoa, Saturday construction hours from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM for exterior work and interior work from July 19 through December 19, and Sunday construction hours from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM for interior work from July 19 through November 28. The type of work that's proposed to be done for the interior is installing flooring, cabinetry, countertops, trims and finishes, painting and other related items. And there's a lot of exterior work proposed as well for window installation, painting, pool installation, irrigation, new sidewalks, new curbs, general concrete construction, waterproofing and landscaping. The type of equipment that will be used for the interior is cordless power drills, paint sprayers and miscellaneous small tools you expect for interior work. And for the exterior, there'd be a range of tools that would need to be used, including screw guns, tack hammers, bobcats, saws, shovels, chipping hammers, concrete placement tools and backhoes and forklifts that would have their backup bills disengaged. The reason the noise waiver has been requested is to expedite project completion, to make up for construction delays, for earlier completion time, what would be better for leasing units, and for an earlier completion time that provides faster relief for construction impacts. The notification for this project, for this noise waiver application was a 300 feet mailer notification and a legal advertisement in the Oakland Tribune. Staff recommendation is for denial. Staff does not believe that an early completion date of approximately one month justifies working on both Saturdays and Sundays for five months. However, if council would like to approve the recommendation, there is also a resolution for that, and that has the standard conditions of approval contained within it for noise waivers. So, I believe the applicant is here to address any questions you may have and to speak, and if you have any questions, I'm available as well.
Questions from council?
No, I can't support this, I'll just tell you right now, but I'd make the motion for approval of staff recommendation.
Yeah, thanks, Kurt. Anyone from the public? Want to be heard on this item?
Would you, excuse me, would you like to hear from the applicant first?
Yes, let's go ahead and do that. Go forward.
Hello, my name is Peter Solar and I work with Equity Residential. I'm representing the owner of the property. If you may be aware, Equity purchased a large portfolio of Archstone properties back in February of 2013, and one of the properties was this project. It had a number of construction defects on the project. So, we spent the time and we had, we fixed the construction defects and we're happy to say that that is resolved and we're in the process of finishing the project. Unfortunately, the delays that we've, the project was originally supposed to be completed in April this year, and it's actually going to be completed at the end of January. So, it's huge amounts of delays and it's caused a significant monetary hardship, as you can imagine. We're estimating that we're spending roughly $12,000 a day because of the delay. Some of the benefits that we would have, we're estimating that potentially we would, if we worked on Saturdays and Sundays, we would, we would potentially pick up approximately a month, which would actually get us out of the holiday season. We would be completely out of the project and done, which is, in our opinion, potentially a benefit. We understand that, that working on the weekends and working on a construction site in general is just a big nuisance for the neighbors, and if we're able to be out before Christmas, we feel like that's a great opportunity. I personally have a construction site that's right next to me and I know what, I know what the impacts are like. I have a five-month-old baby that, that has to deal with that, too, so I understand that. So, I think, I think the best way to minimize the construction impacts is just to be done quicker. We, I, today, I brought Brian Davey from, who's the general contractor on the project. He's with Build Group. He's, he can speak to some of the exercises that we'll be doing on the project. He'll, he also, if he's out on the site, which he would be on the weekends, he's there during the week as well, he would have his phone number posted so that if somebody had any questions, they could call him immediately and we'd have, easily to be accessible. I'm here to answer questions and, you know, really just asking for a favor. I understand you're not interested, but-
Any questions for Mr. Solar?
I'm sorry.
No.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public? Want to be heard?
It's a public hearing? It's a public hearing?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, now is the time to open the public hearing. I'm sorry about that. So, anyone from the public?
Ron Silverman, Fordham Properties. There is, we have been basically residing in a fishbowl for the last three years, four years. I work at a building at 59th Street and Doyle, and the project that is the subject here has had no consideration, has paid no consideration or given no consideration to the neighbors. There is no onsite parking. The streets are visually blocked for traffic. The site is, basically comes right up to the curb and people that live in the neighborhood have no peace and quiet on the weekend if this project were to continue. I could understand some interior work without noise, but then we still have the traffic and the parking that takes up all the surrounding streets. It has been a constant nuisance. I understand that the project has to get complete at some point, but there has to be some relief from day-to-day noise and the impact that this large construction project has, and people just need their weekends, and that's why we have noise ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Laura McCamey, and I live within 300 feet of this project, and I have a question, which is, what is the current condition? Because I'm pretty sure there's work going on on Saturdays now. I see them and hear them there on Saturdays. Is there interior work permitted right now?
Charlie, can you answer that, please?
Yes.
Well, I, I'm not aware of that. There are conditions of approvals and the standard condition, the standard noise ordinance for construction work is 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. We, that is about noise. So, we have told contractors from time to time if they said they wanted to do interior work, our response has been, as long as it doesn't make any noise at all that anybody can hear from anywhere, including car radios and the, you know, the noise from construction vehicles and stuff like that. In other words, if they can operate in such a way that nobody would even know that they were there on the inside of the building, then it's okay to like paint walls and stuff on weekends. But notwithstanding that rather extreme circumstance, then the construction hours are limited, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And if you observe construction work occurring outside of those hours, please call me or our department right away and we'll have, we'll have a talk with the general contractor.
Okay. I can't say for sure. I know there's security onsite on the weekends, but it seems to me like I've heard some hammering going on on Saturdays, not on Sundays. So, I just want to say that we knew when this project started that it was going to be inconvenient and we're very happy that we'll have new neighbors at some point, but please don't let them work on Saturdays and Sundays and make noise. We really need our weekends. And I want to go back to a few years ago when I believe it was Bayer decided that a great time to do some horrible cleaning thing with this, it sounded like you were in a boiler room. They thought Thanksgiving was a great time to do it because no one was around, except those of us who lived in the neighborhoods. And having lived through that and tried to have a relaxing time off while one of our commercial neighbors was trying to do some nasty process, I just, I can't imagine living with that for, you know, five months. It sounds terrible. So, I would encourage you to go with the staff recommendation and deny the permit.
Good evening. I'm Elaine Pieri and I live and work in, within not very far distance of the project. And I think in the last 15 years, we've had nonstop construction going around where I live. And I really feel that it is definitely inappropriate to have construction going on on Saturdays and Sundays. It's an urban environment, I understand, but it is nice to have peace on the weekends and to enjoy it, be it the streets, be it the noise, be it the congestion. So, I would appeal to you all to deny this. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. If I could just ask everyone to please sign in so I can get the spelling of your names correctly? Thank you.
Well, I'm encouraged to see that the staff recommends against granting this noise waiver. That's encouraging because our history with, in Emeryville, with noise waiver exemptions or noise ordinance waivers has been baleful. The noise ordinance itself is only like five or six years old, and I have witnessed the five city council members offer waiver after waiver after waiver to developers, some with no finding of fact whatsoever regarding why they're requesting a waiver, other than they're just, they want it. And that seems to be sort of what these gentlemen here are asking for, that just, construction delays, just random construction delays. Well, I'm in the business and I'll tell you that every job has construction delays, so there's nothing compelling about that. They're talking about chipping hammers and concrete placement equipment. This is extremely loud and also dusty, and, you know, if ever, if ever there's a project you should say no to for a noise waiver, this is, this is certainly one of them. A lot of people live very close by. If you say no, it would be kind of surprising, I mean, because it doesn't happen often. I just suppose we're moving on in Emeryville and we're starting to be concerned ourselves with livability more, and so it's, I guess, it's sort of unfortunate for the, the two gentlemen asking for a waiver that they happen to be asking now when we are concerning ourselves with livability. ourselves with livability here more in Emeryville, but them's the breaks. So I don't think, I think you should say no to the waiver, no, on Saturday or Sunday. Thank you very much.
Hi, Judy Timmel, again. I also live at 5514 Doyle, and all of our neighbors that I have talked to are definitely against this, this proposal. Let me point out that this project is across the street from a park. There is going to be really repercussions on the people who use the park on the weekends. We are going to be negatively impacted, definitely. The, the concrete, as Brian mentioned, backhoes, tack guns, that sounds pretty horrible. The parking is all, all taken up by construction workers as it is during the week. The café is negatively affected, I know, with, with parking issues, and so please, we ask you to, to give us our, our peace and quiet on the weekends. Thank you.
Hi, Darlene from Pain and Rehab across the street from the construction. It's been going on for quite a while, it's really impacted us and our patients. There's always a lot of logistics going on during the day with heavy trucks and, and construction crews. So anything that would move the project along would, would, I would be happy with. I understand the noise would be a problem for the, the residents. We would not be using our parking at, on the weekends, so conceivably, they could use that for parking, it would help with the parking. So I would, I would support it, maybe if they didn't have as much exterior work for the neighbors.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing.
Second here motion, Kurt.
Okay.
No one opposed? Okay.
So that was in denial of the.
That is a denial of the waiver.
Thank you.
Now, from item 6.2, we're going to look at 7.1.
7.1?
Yes. Staff asked me to put that first.
Move to approve the second reading of the ordinance.
I'll second that.
7.1.
On development impact fees.
That's 7.1.1, okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yep.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins excused, and Mayor Asher.
Aye.
Move the second reading of the affordable housing ordinance.
Second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes, I'm not the best type of. Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Atkins excused, Mayor Asher.
Aye.
Which item is that?
7.1.
I want to speak up.
The item has been voted on, but if you would like to, to speak at this time, you're welcome to come forward. We're going to talk about 6.3. That's just the second reading of the ordinance. We're still getting a presentation on impact fees with item 6.3, and that is next.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so now we're at item 6.3.
So Mayor Asher, and members of the city council, I don't have another presentation for you tonight. Basically, it's the same that you heard at your last meeting. As you know, the staff recommendation is to set the affordable housing impact fee at $20,000 per unit, and for non-residential projects, $2 per square foot. The recommendation on the park and recreation fee is 25% of the maximum that was supported by the Nexus study, and the recommendation on the transportation impact fee is 20% of the maximum that was supported by the Nexus study, and that is what the resolutions before you would do. I do have the PowerPoint from your last meeting queued up, if you want to review anything.
Does anyone need to see it, or should we open the public hearing?
I wasn't at the last meeting, and if, if you have a slide that just shows all of the, through the three different impact fees and the cumulative effect, or the total amounts based on that for the different land use types.
Uh, yeah.
That's just a chart that would be helpful, I think.
Okay, well, here it is, let's see.
I know it was in the staff report.
Are you, you're looking for the comparison to other cities?
No.
It's a table. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right. So this slide here shows what the maximum fees were that were supported by the studies. These are the seven scenarios that, that staff developed for the sake of analyzing these fees. So we've got these three residential scenarios. We have office, R&amp;D, retail and restaurant mix, and hotel. And the first residential is rental, and the next two are ownership, multifamily and townhomes. So these are the maximum fees for those seven scenarios that the Nexus studies would have supported. And then, uh, these are the staff recommended fees.
That's exactly what I was looking for, thank you.
Okay.
Let's just keep that up.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And I don't know if, if you're interested in this, but this is a chart that compares the maximum possible fees to the recommended fees. You can see.
Clearly, we're way below.
We're well within our rights to, you know, to impose these fees.
I think one of them was, was it 1% perhaps?
Yeah, a little more than that, but, yeah, pretty, pretty low.
Okay, now I'm going to open the public hearing for this item. Anyone who wants to be heard? The impact fees?
Okay, once again, I would like to say that our goal, the modus, the rationality we should use to determine what the rate should be is what the market will bear. Now, we don't, nobody ever knows precisely what the market will bear, because you have to see what the market does to, and you always know what the market will bear in retrospect, never moving forward, that's speculation. However, having said that, there seems to be a pattern here at City Hall whereby we, we're increasing the fees, which is, which is good, but we're, but the modus or the rationale is always that this should be lower than the neighboring cities, and I just don't understand the, I don't, I don't understand the rationality there. I mean, it needs to be reasoned based, I don't think it should just be operating sort of the, sort of in a capricious manner. I think it should be, it should be, you know, it should be, it should be rational. And I, it seems to me that this is sort of not rational. I just think we should charge what, what Berkeley and Oakland charge. I think we are, everybody's good as those cities, maybe better, arguably better, or certainly our geographic location's better than those two cities. So I just think we should be charging, that should be the, the rationality generally, at least what Oakland and Berkeley charge, and that's probably closer to what the market will actually bear. And so I think that should be our generally, operating, general operating rational basis. I guess we're going to be talking about, so now we're on.
6.3.
6.3, what is it?
3.
6.3, okay. And this is, this is it for developer impact fees tonight? Okay, then, okay, one last I wanted to say, as presumed Mr. Nady is going to be speaking, and I just wanted to say, you know, he's going to be arguing that he doesn't want to pay any increase in impact fees, and you know, that's understandable, nobody likes to pay more money. He's somebody that, a property owner that's moving, that's selling his property, and so I just don't think his argument is compelling. Furthermore, we've already given him, as I alluded to before, a massive taxpayer giveaway in terms of a property value enhancement without any rational basis for that, that was back in 2009. And now here, he comes back again asking for more taxpayer bailout, essentially is what he's only asking for. He wants the taxpayers to fund his project. And I say, and if he's saying he can't make a go of it with this project, he says the whole thing's going to crash down, and he has to pay less than what neighboring cities charge, then he, then the, the project will, will falter and fail. And to that, I say, and I think you should say, well, you're, it's not compelling, we don't, you know, you're in the wrong business then. If you can't compete with other developers in that, in an even playing field, level playing field, well then, you're, you know, we don't really have any, we don't feel sorry for you. Just, we're here, not, we're not here to, to give largess to developers, we're here to make a, make a livable city. Thank you very much.
One else to be heard on the impact fees.
Thanks for the introduction. My name is John Nady. In spite of Mr. Donahue's indictments, I'd like to present some realistic facts for the city to consider in making a decision regarding the impact fees in all cases. For the benefit of those here and watching on television, I'd like to read an email I sent to all of you this afternoon. As you decide the disposition of the affordable housing impact fees, including fees for the major residential rental developments directly, currently in the city pipeline, I would like to point out that the city will never collect fees on projects that are scuttled by a $20,000 per unit fee. Projects that were based on the economics known at the time, development plans were submitted to the city would be unfairly killed by an impact fee that was not factored into its plans. That happened to my project that Avalon Bay was developing at 6701 Shellmount Street. Given Avalon Bay's plans submitted to the city now almost fully entitled, the huge unanticipated almost $5 million retroactive fee increase made the project unworkable. Please understand that my already submitted plans optimize projected rates of return and have slim profit margins because of fixed and increasing costs. In fact, even if my plans are changed, the economics, including the increased impact fees, still would not allow for residential rental development, the most cost-effective type of development, to be built. Unless the city adopts a smaller fee, impact fee, or grants an exemption for projects that have already submitted plans, the city will never see fees on projects that are killed and lose the other benefits that would come from these developments, including the transfer tax, which is tied into the sell, selling price of the property, as you know. My company will be forced to remain in its present location in an aging building, which would not be a positive outcome for either the city or my company. I urge you to consider this matter carefully and not impose, propose to Conian $20,000 per unit affordable housing impact fee. I urge the city to lower the new impact fee for residential rental properties that have already submitted plans to the city to a level that would be more workable, as for example, $8,000 per unit, or better yet, to exempt these projects. In the remaining time, I'd like to address a couple of points Mr. Donahue brought up. He says that I was granted a gift in the zoning changes that were made a few years back. My understanding was that they were essentially a continuation of the previous zoning that was allowed for my building, based on feedback I'd gotten from interested parties in the city previously. So in a sense that it was nothing new, I don't see that as, as a largesse or a gift as he, as he.
What time is that? Thank you.
As he said, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on this item? Yeah.
Hi, again, Felix Saoyang, EH Housing. I am here to support the recommended impact fees. I think it will be a huge asset for the city moving forward, for affordable housing, for parks and rec, and for transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard? Nope. Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing.
I have a couple comments.
Yeah, go ahead, Jennifer.
First of all, I just want to, I want to thank the staff. I think this was about a year and a half process in terms of doing these Nexus studies and really coming up with a rationale and understanding for what, what we can do to support the infrastructure and the need for new infrastructure from new development in our town. And with the loss of redevelopment, the need for this, all the more. It's very complex, and I appreciated the level of detail that we were given, ample opportunity to look at again and again, and the public comments as well. I do have a couple comments relating to, first of all, the comparison with other cities. And as I understand it, several cities that we are comparing with here are considering raising their fees even more at this time, or doing their own impact studies for different impact fees. So maybe they have the transportation in place, but not the affordable housing, or vice versa. The other item that I would like to highlight, which is on the table that Charlie put up, which is looking at the $2 per square foot recommend, recommended fee for office research and development and retail and restaurant mix. I want to highlight especially the retail and restaurant mix, and I understand that staff recommended the $2 per square foot because of the market, and basically what they think the market will bear. And I understand also that we can revisit these fees on an ongoing basis. But when I look at the jobs that are created by retail and restaurant in the city, those are the lowest-paid jobs in our community. And I know that most people who, and if you read the study and you look at the national statistics, on the average salary for folks who work in retail or restaurant, there's no way they can afford to live in Emeryville. So they're living somewhere else, and, and how are we taking care of the people who do work in our town? So I would ask the council if you're interested in supporting an increase of that $2 per square foot to a $4 per square foot, and the, for all of those, those three commercial uses. Yeah. The demand for affordable housing is directly linked to the jobs that, that we have in this town, and, and this is one way to show that. It was also brought to my attention that recent research from UC Davis has Emeryville with 7.8 minimum wage jobs for each affordable housing unit that we have in town. And there's a deficit then of about 1,150 affordable units, homes for people in town. We, when you, when you read through the details, we have done well compared to our neighbors in producing affordable housing in town, but it is woefully inadequate. And the fact that we have so many more jobs in our, in our community than housing, I think it's, in terms of units, it's three times, three something times the number of We need to recognize then our responsibility for providing adequate housing for, for people in town, whether they're working with a high-paid job or with a lower-paid job as well. And here's another thought that I think is really critical for us to consider, which is that every new market rate unit that we build increases the demand for affordable housing. And that's why we have this rationale that supports a fee on new multifamily rental units. We're not keeping up, we're not building enough affordable housing to make up for the deficit that we have now. And our development of market rate is actually exacerbating this housing and job imbalance in town. So, you know, when you look at our Vena numbers, we're supposed to produce basically 50/50 affordable units and market rate units. That doesn't happen, but I'm just glad to see us taking a step in the right direction so that we will have ongoing funds towards, towards creating affordable housing units going forward. And again, I'll just put out there, if council's interested, I would support raising the per square footage from $2 to $4.
Other comments from council?
I guess my only comment is, if that happens, I'd like to bring this back again so people know about the change, and they can come to the meeting and see how that affects them. Because this is what's been published, and this is what everybody expects right now. And to change it tonight without having, you know, outreach to our developers in town, I don't think that's really fair. So I.
Well, we changed another rate this evening without putting it back to, to the public.
Well, I, in this case, I'm at, this has been published for a long time, as the other one has been.
Yeah, it's just a recommendation from staff, so I think we're allowed to set it anywhere up to the cap.
Yeah.
Yes.
Nora, did you want to?
Jennifer, I'm not quite clear. We're looking at the affordable housing column, and you're saying to increase the retail restaurant mix to $4?
And R&amp;D.
And R&amp;D and office.
Yeah, it's, I, it, we've compared. Yeah, it's, I, we've compared ourselves to other jurisdictions, and maybe staff can help me out. I think that a neighboring jurisdiction has it at $4 already. But maybe we'd have to go back and look at the comparisons to know. I think that the $2 was low, or maybe they don't have it there. But that was recommended.
I would support this.
Any, anyone who can help me with that, great.
I believe Oakland has a fee of $4. Berkeley, you know, has a fee, I believe, in the $4 range, and Alameda does as well.
Okay.
Excuse me, would you introduce yourself?
I would support that.
Excuse me, David Dozema with Kaiser Marsh, and the authors of the, of the two housing impact fee studies.
Thank you.
If I may, Charlie, do you have the sheets showing what that, that comparison would look like?
I do, if, if the council's interested. I've updated the comparison with other cities in anticipation that you might want to consider raising it to $4, so I can show you what that looks like.
Why don't you do that?
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's not rocket science. Basically, for uses would have their fees increased by $2 a square foot. However, I also included hotels because this is based on $2 a square foot also, on the assumption that the hotel room is 350 square feet. So...
It would double that.
That would raise that by $700. So let me just find it here. Which one is it? Here it is. Okay, so this is the comparison with other cities currently. So we've got, for office, we have Emeryville, Berkeley, Oakland, Walnut Creek, and also for retail mixed use for, retail mix rather, for R&amp;D, we swapped out Oakland and Walnut Creek with Richmond and Alameda because we felt that they were our closer competitors for that use. So this is what the impact fee looks like with $2 a square foot for the affordable housing fee, and this is what it looks like at $4 a square foot. Obviously, they all go up by $2. So here, we're, you know, roughly equal to the other cities, and here we're higher than all of them. However, as Councilmember West noted, and I did make a point of this in my presentation last time, other cities are considering raising their fees as well.
Do you know what cities are?
Not off the top of my head.
I know Oakland is undergoing...
Oakland, I believe Alameda is looking at their fees.
Yeah, I think, I think quite a few of them are. I'll just tell you that. I mean, I attend a monthly meeting of all of the planning directors in all the Alameda County cities, and they're all very interested in what we're doing, because they want... And then this is hotels. This is interesting because this is the impact fees that we've proposed at $2 a square foot, and it's lower than the other cities. And if we raise it to $4, it's about the same.
And there's maybe going up, we don't know.
Right.
If they...
Right. So that's what it would look like. So this is for hotels, and then this is for the others.
And Charlie, bring back that chart where it compares to what the possible, the possible charge we could, what the extent of the Nexus is.
Okay.
Percentage.
That's, this is the maximum, the green is the maximum that we could charge under the Nexus studies, and the dark blue is what the staff recommendation is at $2 a square foot for hotels, I mean, for non-residential, for housing. And if we raise that to $4, those little blue bars would bump up a little bit.
But there's still plenty of room.
They're still well within the maximum.
Right.
Well below the maximum.
I didn't make the point about hotels because it wasn't per square foot, but it makes sense that it's based on a per square foot. And I have to say that besides retail and restaurant, hotels are the other employers of very low-paying jobs, although they're better off in Emeryville than they are somewhere else.
Is that a motion to approve that?
Yeah, my motion would be to, to change the square footage and the hotels.
I'd second that motion.
So just to clarify, you have before you three resolutions, one for each fee. I don't know if we need to vote on them separately.
Yes.
The city attorney says we do. The first one, I believe, is the affordable housing fee, so that would be the one that you would be modifying.
So my motion is for 6.3.1, and it's to follow the staff recommendation with the exception of the $2 per square foot recommendation being changed to $4 per square foot.
Nora, seconded. Anyone opposed?
I am on that one.
Do we need a roll call vote?
I think as long as everybody is...
Three to one.
Three to one.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinkman, pose.
I'll move the next, the park and recreation facility impact fee as staff recommended.
Seconded.
Anyone opposed? Nope. Okay, that's 4-0.
Move the transportation facility impact fee.
I'll second that.
Anyone opposed? Nope. Okay, 4-0 on that. Moving along to 7.4.
Good evening, council members and Madam Mayor. I'm Kim Obstfeld. I'm with PMC Consulting. I've been working closely with city staff to work on the city's housing element update for the 2015 to 2023 planning period. So just a quick overview, I just want to update you on where we're at with the housing element update process. You have before you a complete draft of the housing element, and tonight we are looking for a recommendation to go ahead and, or approval to go ahead and submit that draft to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for their compliance review. They'll look at the document and make sure that it meets statutory requirements. I want to hit on a couple of key components of the housing element tonight in my presentation. The first is the regional housing needs allocation analysis, just describing the methodology that we took there, and making sure that we have a clear understanding of how we're presenting that information. And the other piece is taking a look at key program changes that we're recommending from the city's existing 2007 to 2014 housing element, to the new version you have in front of you tonight. And then we can talk briefly about next steps. So, again, just an overview of the update process. The city does have an existing housing element that was adopted and certified by the state in 2010. So we use that document as, as a baseline and as a foundation to go ahead and update the housing element for the new planning period. We made updates based on our review of existing policies and programs, new data that's available, 2010 census data and other demographic information sources, looking at changes in the community, and then certainly throughout the process, looking at input from the community. With that, we've drafted a complete housing element, which again, you have in front of you tonight. With your approval, that document will be submitted to the State Department for, of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for their review. Once we've got their comments, which they, no matter how good of a job we do, they always have a little something to say. Hopefully, that'll be minimal. We'll come back to you with their recommendations and present the, the housing element for adoption, and then go ahead and resend the document back to the state for final review and certification. Quick, quick update on the, on the schedule. So we made the draft housing element available to the public beginning Friday, May 23rd. We sent out notifications to our stakeholder list and posted the document to the website, and it's still available today. We took the document to the Housing Committee on June 4th for their review and discussion, and then took it to Planning Commission on June 26th. Of course, we're here tonight, and then we anticipate sending to the state as early as Wednesday or Thursday this week, depending on the outcome of the meeting this evening. The HCD review period can take up to 60 days. We are eligible for streamlined review because the city has taken steps to, to stay in compliance with current state housing law. There's five aspects of that that the state is looking for, and we're in compliance with all five. In my recent experience, it's taking 30 to 45 days, so it's, it's not much of a break, but it could be, it could be slightly less, depending on their workload. We anticipate coming back in, in the fall for adoption hearings, and then at that point, we'll resubmit to HCD. And that final review and certification is, is essentially just a formality. It tends to go very quickly. They rarely need the full 90 days. The only exception is if the, if there's some substantive change that comes up during the adoption hearing process. We have conducted a comprehensive public outreach campaign. We have a webpage dedicated to the project on the city's webpage. It displays opportunities for input and has all of the presentations from past meetings. We held a community workshop back on March 13th. We had an online survey posted for a couple of months for folks that aren't able to attend events or, or wanted to provide additional input. We held a roundtable discussion session, which was very productive, with local housing and service providers on April 10th. We've been to three housing committee meetings. We held a study session with Planning Commission in March, and again, took the draft to them for review in June. And we were here with you for a study session back on April 22nd. That, I'll go ahead and dig into the regional housing needs allocation. And again, this analysis is a required component of the housing element. State law requires HCD, and I won't belabor this too much because I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but HCD is, is required to go ahead and project housing needs for the entire state for the planning period. And just a note, the, the RENA period varies just slightly from the housing element planning period to, to confuse as many people as possible. And I haven't, I haven't been able to get a clear explanation yet as, as to why that is, but, but it, it is slightly off. So the RENA projection period is from 2014 to 2022. So HCD comes up with their statewide number that goes out to regional planning organizations. For the city of Emeryville, that's the Association of Bay Area Governments. So they were, received an allocation of almost 190,000 units, and gave out their distribution to cities and counties through a long and somewhat painful process. The city of Emeryville was allocated 1,498 units. That is somewhat of an increase from the 2007 to 2014 period, when the RENA was 1,137 units. That's most, mostly due to a change in methodology with A-BAG this, this round. Their methodology was revised to be in greater alliance with Plan Bay Area. So in an attempt to link jobs and housing is, is basically the strategy they took. So again, we're at 1,498 units for this RENA period. That allocation is then broken up into income categories, very low through above moderate. And then the state, recent state legislation from a couple of years ago requires us to take a look also at extremely low-income housing needs, which in compliance with state law are estimated to be 50% of the very low-income allocation. So all told, about 32% of the, the allocation is for lower-income households, or housing appropriate for, for lower-income households. So just to emphasize that the RENA is not, it's not a quota. It's, there's no requirement that the city actually build these units. The city, it's understood on the state, state level that the city is not a builder. This is merely included in the housing law as, as a land use exercise. The requirement is that the city examine available land resources and ensure that opportunities exist for the market to then come forward and produce these units. So the, the analysis, I understand, looks a little bit funky. Let me, let me go ahead and talk you through that. The first thing we looked at is planned and approved projects. So taking a look at projects that are already in the pipeline. So we do have some that are, are scheduled to produce affordable housing units, some through the set-aside ordinance, 64th and Christie, which I understand is now Emmy, Parkside, 39th and Adeline, which is in progress. And then we did take a look at 3706 San Pablo, which is underway with our friends at EAH. So with that, we had a total of 1,837 units already underway. A portion of those were our schedule to be affordable to, and deed restricted for affordability to lower-income households. After that, we took a look at vacant and underutilized sites. So the state has established, after a fairly painful review period during the last housing element, as part of that, they established a default density to say what sites could be appropriate to accommodate housing for lower-income households. That default density is 30 units per acre for the city of Emeryville. So when looking at sites that could be appropriate to accommodate lower-income, housing for lower-income households, that's, that's the number that we were looking at. So any sites that had zoning already in place at 30 units per acre or more, which is why you're seeing that huge number for sites that could potentially accommodate lower-income households. We understand, and this is by no means a projection, we understand that the vast majority of that is going to be developed at market rate and is going to be affordable only to moderate and above moderate households. But we can show as part of this exercise that those parcels, according to state law, are appropriately zoned to accommodate housing for lower-income households.
Can I ask you a question right now?
Yes, of course.
I don't want to interrupt your, but I know that I want to ask a question about the slide, so...
Sure.
So under vacant and underutilized sites, there's the large number 3,438, but then the 30, which is below that. I'm stumped by that number 30.
Yeah, those are, and I can pull up the exact properties. There are some, we went with the minimum density in our analysis, and there are some sites on our inventory that were on smaller parcels that were zoned at a minimum of 20 units per acre. So those were extracted from the total and weren't attributed to sites that are potentially feasible for lower-income housing. So that's where you get that 30.
Okay, because the, the units that are produced by the three, that are, add up to 3,438, could also be market rate, as you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
And so separating them, you've just separated the, basically by size of parcel?
By, by density.
By density.
Yeah. Any, any other questions on that?
I guess my last comment here is that I know the moderate is in white instead of in blue, but sometimes moderate is included in affordable housing if it's subsidized. And so that total then is 147 units over the 1,837. That's what's planned and approved, and that comes to 8% for affordable units in the planned and approved projects.
Got it.
Which, just for the public's information.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and moderate ends up sort of lumped in with above moderate because there is no state standard for that. So in terms of looking out at what sites are feasible and potentially appropriate for moderate-income housing, there's no threshold. You know, it, it would be a real shot in the dark to try to take a guess at, at what that might look like. So it's assumed that the market will produce at least a portion of those units that are available for, for moderate-income households. And again, the vacant and underutilized sites, again, we took a look specifically at vacant sites. We also included a few sites that are owned by the city or controlled by the city, underutilized properties that have an existing floor area ratio that's very, very low compared to what's allowed, sites that have large surface parking lots that have a real potential for redevelopment or infill development. And all of those sites were envisioned for change in the general plan. For example, Powell Street Plaza or East Bay Bridge, some of those shopping centers are very large sites, that it's going to take a while before we quite get, get there, but they are, you know, there's quite a, quite a bit of opportunity there for, for infill, and certainly housing is, is likely to be a part of that. And, and just showing a map of those sites. So again, number nine and number 16 are, again, are not number, excuse me, 17 and, and 16, it's hard to see the map even from here, are, are those larger shopping centers, and the rest are, are other sites that are detailed in the housing element. Key program changes. So just walk through some of the changes that we made to the, the plan program section. We did delete quite a few programs, primarily because they were implemented and were no longer relevant. So quite a few were amendments to the planning regulations, all of which were completed. They're, just to kind of talk through those, revising the density bonus, revising regulations for secondary units, allowing live-work and light industrial and mixed-use zones with a CUP, taking care of compliance with Senate Bill 2, which required cities to zone for emergency shelters, transitional housing, and supportive housing, and amending the regulations for compliance with regard to group homes and residential care facilities. Along the same lines, planning regulations were amended to handle design review exemptions for projects with negligible visual impacts, deal with interim zoning classifications until the new planning regulations were adopted, integrate bonuses for green building, and incorporate open space requirements for multifamily housing. We did delete an additional five programs, just based on the fact that they were no longer appropriate or were found to be ineffective. longer appropriate or were found to be ineffective, or the intent was captured in another program. For example, development that fills gaps in unit types continues to be an appropriate policy, but we felt that the intent was captured in other more specific programs during this update. Use of redevelopment agency funds no longer relevant due to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. And then just to walk through, we did add quite a few programs. These were based on, again, the review of the existing housing program, our understanding of current HCD requirements and best practices, and then input received from the community and decision makers. We added a program to work proactively to monitor and work to retain existing affordable housing units that are at risk of converting to market rate. We added, or called out, added a program to call out the availability of density bonuses and incentives for affordable units, added a program regarding the Housing Impact Fee and Trust Fund, and note on that one that we'll want to tweak that language just a little bit to reflect events that took place earlier this evening. Supporting state and regional efforts to establish funding sources for affordable housing, the use of redevelopment agency boomerang funds for affordable housing, and the term boomerang is kind of being thrown out there, but it's basically money that would have gone into the redevelopment agency via the tax increment financing that's now coming back to the city in the form of general funds. A potential universal design requirement, and we put this in as primarily a study item to look at the potential of making universal design a requirement for a portion of new units, that universal design is already a component of the planning regulations as a density bonus item, but thinking about whether or not we should require a portion of new units to have those features. Taking a look at the potential for housing for persons with disabilities and/or developmental disabilities on city-owned sites, maintaining and monitoring the housing sites inventory, just keeping that up to date, something HCD likes to see. Advertising the availability of below-market-rate units to school district, city, and child development center employees during the existing planning period. Two below-market-rate units were sold to Emory Unified School District employees, continuing on in those efforts. Promoting architectural diversity in new housing, which came primarily out of our housing committee discussions. Continuing to work toward adopting family-friendly design guidelines and looking to promote family-friendly housing on city-owned sites. And then just one last set. Promoting the availability of mortgage credit certificates, which is administered through Alameda County. Providing education and technical assistance to homeowner associations primarily to maintain their eligibility for FHA insured loans, letting people get into the building. Encouraging design features to prevent stormwater intrusion, looking for opportunities to leverage the fact that a large portion of the city is a priority development area, looking at funding and new things that are coming down the line on that. Implementing eBots strategies, continuing to look at that link between housing and transit, and revising design guidelines to incorporate community building features in multifamily housing. The Planning Commission did have a couple of recommendations. Their recommendations were with regard to, or changes with regard to programs H426 and 275. They wanted to eliminate, oh gosh, the strikeout is not showing up on this slide, so if you could refer to your packet on that one, sorry about that. The first one, they wanted to go ahead and strike the second sentence, which reads, "Consider amending the city's design guidelines to encourage multifamily housing that features eaves, recessed windows, and gabled roofs." And then on the second one, they wanted to, after the word "features," oh, you got the addition, eliminate the text after stormwater intrusion, after that comma there, eliminate the rest of that. Just wanting to be less specific in these programs. And on program H733, they wanted to expand on the program as it was written and emphasize interaction both internally among community members living in the building as well as externally with the street and larger community. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over for questions and comments. And again, we're looking tonight for you to adopt a resolution to go ahead and approve the submittal of the housing element to HCD.
Mayor, could I make a comment on that last slide, actually? If you would go back, if that's easy. This is the H733, and someday I'll figure out how that numerical system works. I wanted to add another thought about the community building elements for this, which is about the way parking is arranged and how individual garages reduce community interactions compared to a common parking area, which can also be shared and thereby potentially reducing parking. So it seemed like it would fit in there, and I wanted to suggest that.
Okay.
No comments? No? Nora, any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say this has been a very extensive law process, and I compliment your group and the staff, and especially the housing committee that really struggled with this and really kind of tore it to pieces and put it back together again. So a lot of people have worked in this, and I think it's a tight document, and I see no reason why the state shouldn't clap us on the back and give us a good hand. I'd move the resolution. It's a very well-done job.
I'll second that as well. Go ahead, come forward.
I wanted to make a couple of comments. I love reading the housing element.
It's the best document around, isn't it? It is riveting.
Page-turner.
I'm serious. I really enjoy, I really enjoy reading the housing element, and it underscores that we are in a housing emergency. I mean, the degree to which housing is absolutely out of reach and unaffordable for people in our region is something that we just need to really all be concerned about and coming up with better and better solutions for. And again, I want to appreciate all of staff's hard work on this. And for me, there was one question that I had. There was a mention in here that we needed more single-family homes in Emeryville, and there was, it was just like one line.
Where would they go?
And that's what the first thing I thought is, where do we put those? And now I can't find it in my notes, Charlie.
I believe it was a public comment at a workshop.
Oh, okay, all right.
All the public comments were included, they were not.
Okay, all right. I was just curious about that. Okay, thank you. We'll take public comment.
And then I have a few more comments after the public.
Yeah.
One thing that might be good for our community going forward is if we can have our townhouses and condos maybe have something added to the CCNR documents that would compel people to rent for no more than two years and then sell. My mother's condo, for example, her townhouse in Illinois, has this. And what it does is it makes for actual community members in her complex and not just all renters. And we can be a city of actual, long-term people really living here. And I know that we can specify a lot of owner-occupied units going forward, but those can just become rental units easily. But if we had something in the CCNRs that would say, no, we can encourage you to move after a certain period of time, or, you know, something that would keep us a city of real community members. So I'd like to see that as a part of our housing approach to come.
If I may make a comment or ask staff, I think staff is actually working on some kind of HOA guidelines along those lines already, so I'm glad you raised that.
So I've sort of looked at the housing element, perused it previously, so I sort of understand what it is. It's pretty dense. I agree with what the mayor is saying. It's basically a cause to an emergency housing condition that we have here. But I wanted to say something regarding community building, because there's a reference to that, having kind of housing that encourages community building. Pardon me. And I have argued in the past and that I found no takers here among the staff or the council members, but I'll just say it once again. We keep building these formerly lofts, now the more apartments, either for rent or for ownership condos, with parking garages. And the problem is, the way we're doing these developments, they're podiums, and they are what I refer to as drive-in, drive-out. And so they're very alienating, and they don't build the community. As a matter of fact, they sort of discourage community. And the way, if you look at great cities, they don't have a drive-in, drive-out lofts or condominiums. Instead, people walk. This is California, we don't have very good public transit, so it's not really very realistic to walk. So I thought that we should have an intermediate scenario whereby developers put money into a pool, and then the city takes that pool of money and they build scattered throughout the city, public parking garages. And then people would walk a block or two, they park in the garage, and they'd walk a block or two to their homes, and thereby activating the sidewalks, buying flowers and what-have-you pizza or whatever on the way home from work, the two blocks. And they would talk to each other, just like, you know, we're supposed to be encouraging, we're supposed to be activating our citizenry. And you do that by getting people to walk on the sidewalk. So the drive-in, drive-out model is really flawed. It discourages community building. And I'm just sorry that nobody here has saw fit to explore this model. And it, you know, it's sort of, at this point, maybe too late. I mean, we're pretty much already all built out with drive-in, drive-out lofts and apartments. But I would like to see some, have this idea be taken seriously, because it's nothing really radical. It's basically how our grandparents built cities. They didn't build the drive-in, drive-in model. This is a sort of a more modern concept, and I just think we should take this kind of approach more seriously, and maybe it might not be too late for some projects in the city. Thanks.
Anyone else? Miss item?
Yeah, I heard Brian's comment. You know, Brian, 20 years ago, we started to do just that. We segregated properties, and we decided we would put parking garages, but nobody wanted to pay for them, because there wasn't a parking problem then, and people couldn't see in the future, so they wouldn't want to pay for them. So we couldn't get them off the ground. That's how Wall and Creed works. That's why they're successful. That's why they have a downtown in Buffalo. I came up from downstairs a little bit out of that. You know, I've been working with ABAG now and attending the regional meetings. They have this Regional Prosperity Committee, which I didn't even know existed, and they put a lot of facts out about this stuff. And I think you need to connect with those facts. You know, they talk about the housing, they talk about existing discrimination and problems with landlords and how you can retain tenants. And I would just urge you to take a look at some of those videos. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead. I'd actually like to piggyback on Kim Bukowski's last comment, which is asking if there's some way, given the significant number of residents who rent in our town, which is about 65%, I believe, and again, this housing crisis that you've mentioned, the way rents, it was said in the housing element, have gone up for two-bedroom units in three years, went up 31% the rent in Emeryville. I would like to ask the council to give direction, and it could be included in the housing element or it could be a separate effort, to look at rent stabilization. I know that there are laws restricting rent control post 1995. That was very well explained in here. But I happen to know that as the city of Alameda is looking at their housing element, they were directed to include at least a task force or some effort by the staff or the citizens to look into these issues. And I think Emeryville would be the perfect place to look into that. I know some of our neighbors have those kinds of policies on the books, and because our housing is newer, we won't be able to do the same kind of policies. But I'm curious how we can support those residents since it is 2/3 of our population in terms of rent increases and protecting from that. The other comment I'd like to make is, there's a very interesting chart. We've been talking a lot about renter households versus homeownership households, and looking at the income for those also is a very stark reality. And I don't want us to paint Emeryville as a place that is going to be unaffordable if we only, we're never going to only allow ownership units, but there's this balance between kind of putting your roots down when you buy a property versus renting and moving on, but recognizing that the rental properties are very important in terms of housing lower-income folks, and we don't want to diminish that and the need for that as well. So some kind of a balance, and I appreciate the ideas that have come forward because I think they're creative, and I hope that our staff can use the housing element as a, you know, policy guide and look at putting those in place over the next few years as well. I also noticed just typos here and there, and I don't want to take the public's time, but I would love to get those to you because I think it could be helpful when you have their eyes on it. I like typos. I was a teacher.
Call the question.
Who made the motion in the second?
You had a motion in the second.
Davis and Brinkman.
Davis and Brinkman.
Did you want a roll call vote? I'm sorry.
Oh, I have one other question, I'm sorry. Just in the language for the city attorney, if you don't mind. I'm used to, in affordable housing terms, I'm used to seeing extremely low, very low, low-income, moderate, and above. And for some reason, in the ordinance, is it the ordinance that goes along with this? Or am I thinking of a different?
I believe you're thinking of the ordinance that you previously passed.
Oh, it was the previous. So I'm just curious where the term median came in versus the moderate, and also there was no extremely low. And the numbers were just a little bit different. So I'm curious if the state has changed their policies and how they're divvying up income levels, or what the confusion was there. I was surprised to see differences.
I believe that has something to do with how we calculate the affordability, the rent levels and the incomes of people that are at different rental levels. It's, I think it's a conservative approach. It's like not supposed to be more than 35% of your rent for homeownership and 30, I mean, of your income and 30% for rental. The difference between ownership and rental, by the way, is because ownership, you're building equity, and in rental housing, you're not. So you can, you know, it's justifiable to pay a slightly higher percentage. As far as the median, that kind of confused me, too. I mean, that was, that whole ordinance was written by outside counsel, and I believe it was intended to be like a benchmark that the other things are measured against.
It just didn't seem consistent with our other documents.
It's not an income level that's in the RENA. That's true.
Okay. And could I suggest perhaps in the final version of this, that when you discuss AMI, and I think you even looked at different years with AMI, if you could just put what that Alameda County AMI number is, then anyone reading this would get a better sense of what that means, because otherwise you have to look up what the area median income is, and it does change from year to year. So thanks for the explanation, Charlie.
Mayor Asher, before we move away from the housing issue, from some of the comments that came forward from the public today about people, the renters in our community, not being part of the community or not being invested in the community, I frankly do not believe that's a fair categorization, because I know many people in this city that are renters, that have been here for 20, 25, 30 years, very involved in this community, and they're renters. So let's not just say the only people that care about the city are homeowners. I don't believe that to be a true statement.
I feel the same way, Nora. I just want to point out that I ran for city council as a renter. And so I was pretty invested. I understand what people are talking about in terms of balance, but I also think that in an urban environment, we may need to recognize that some people don't want to necessarily own a home. The more important thing is affordability.
Right, right.
That's what That's what can bring people here and keep people here, and we don't have enough tools in that regard. But like I said, I was a renter. I believe that you can contribute quite a lot as a renter in our city. So with that, we'll call the question.
Does anyone on the city council support my idea of looking into rent stabilization and what we could do to support the rental population?
I've asked a couple of questions about this of staff. I would be supportive of that. I mean, understanding that we have a lot of new stock housing, and so solutions like rent control or not.
Could I suggest that we bump this back to the Housing Committee, have them take a look at it, analyze it, give us some recommendations?
That's a great idea.
There is a good Housing Committee. They're very dedicated, and I'm sure that they'd bounce it around and come up with some ideas.
Great. Thank you for that suggestion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Anyone opposed? No? Okay. All right, thank you. On to item 7.5.
Move second reading.
I need to recuse myself from this item. So I'm going to leave.
I'd second that.
Did you want to say something, Michael?
Yes, I would just note for the record that as an ordinance, we need three affirmative votes for it to be adopted.
Is that true for any ordinance?
Yes.
That's a majority.
I thought it was a majority of those present and voting.
No.
Is there any public comment on this item? No?
Call the question.
I have some comments first and some questions. And I want to thank Councilmember Atkins, who's actually not here this evening, but pointed out that she, I voted against this ordinance at the last council meeting, and she felt that I didn't kind of thoroughly explain what my reasoning was behind that. And so I just want to take a couple of moments to ask some questions and also say some things. First of all, I understand that one of the justifications that we're talking about here is that when we did the land swap, it was zoned in a particular way. For me, when I look at the timing of that, that was an interim map. And yes, it was zoned in a particular way, but interims also suggest to me that at that point, maybe the zoning was not settled. But more than that, when I look at the zoning map, we're creating an island of mixed-use residential surrounded by a very thin ribbon of parks and open space. And I ask the question whether the property owner could still have the parking lot, even if it was zoned park and open space. That park and open space does permit parking lots, and you address that. Right. And I'm unsure, to me, when I look at the findings that would have to be made on this, I think that having a building there in an area where we have parks and green space on both sides would actually make that space less usable, less pleasant, less valuable. And those are the reasons that I voted against the ordinance. Now, I don't, another question that I was thinking of as I was looking at this is, when we originally talked about the land swap, at that point, could we have said that we wanted it zoned differently? Or, I'm trying to figure out if there was a point in the negotiations where we could have looked at this, and, you know, because there, in this timeline, there are several different places where we may have had an opportunity to do things differently, and I'm wondering if that could have been part of the land swap hypothetically.
You know, you could have requested anything you want to be of the land swap, but the land swap is not something that you can, absent use of some other authority, which we aren't going there on that, requires the other party involved to agree to those terms.
Right.
And it's really sort of basic, that if the city wants to create the park, that's been discussed and shown, then we need the cooperation of the doctors who own it so that we can create this land swap. And their position is, as a condition of that land swap, we want our property that we are going to be owning, or that they are going to be owning in the after condition, to have its zoning to be the same land, essentially land use designation that currently exists and existed at the time in your general plan. And your general plan is sort of the, you know, it is your constitution for your land use. So notwithstanding what Charlie is saying, that yeah, you could allow for parking in a park open space designation, this zoning that's being proposed here is also consistent, it's much more consistent, I should say, with its existing general plan designation that the council approved. And that's what the designation was at the time that they agreed to go along with this concept of swapping the property. They didn't have an obligation to do that. They did have a condition to work with us to provide for that, and that's what they've done. And if we don't get this boat tonight.
I hear you, Mike.
Then we don't have a deal. And so we can either continue this to a future meeting when we have Councilmember Atkins here to, I would presume that she would vote the same way she did on the first reading. And, you know, if that's the pleasure of the council, then we can continue it to, I guess, your meeting September 2nd. As I alluded to in our prior meeting, that will sort of, that will delay the closing of the transaction and the eventual construction of the park, so.
Let me point out one other thing. As a result of the action that the council took at your last meeting on the general plan, the general plan designation of this, of the doctor's parcel is now M U R, mixed-use with residential, and the surrounding city property is park open space. The zoning is required by state law to be consistent with the general plan. So if you don't approve this ordinance to make the zoning consistent with the general plan, then you'll have to go back and amend the general plan to make it consistent with what the zoning is, I guess, because they're not supposed to be inconsistent with each other.
Right. One of the things that we want to address. For me, I am not convinced that this is, that I can make the findings that we're talking about, that this is not going to interrupt that space, but I'm willing to continue this until Ruth gets back.
Move to continue the item until the first meeting in September.
Second.
No one opposed? Okay. 8.1.
This is made 3, 0, West is recused.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on a minute. This will be short. Okay. Okay, so every year, the council is requested to adjust the Citywide Property-Based Business Improvement District assessment, and today is the day that staff is recommending that the city council take up this action. The deadline to be able to get things to the council for, to be placed on the property rolls is early August. So this really is the last, well, unless you want to do it at the August 6th meeting, this is the last meeting before then, unless you hold a special, another special meeting.
Was that a joke, Karen?
That is a joke, Karen.
I was hoping that.
So anyway, just a quick introduction. Most of you are familiar, so I just did one slide, that the Citywide Property-Based Business Improvement District is a special assessment district that was first established in 2001 and then renewed in 2006 in order to fund the Immigrant Ground Shuttle and other alternative transportation initiatives. The P-Bid is assessed on commercial property, including rental housing. The Emeryville Transportation Management Association represents those property owners that contribute to the shuttle's funding, including non-P-Bid contributors. There are a few, we call them direct bills, that consist of some developer agreements for those parcels that straddle the Berkeley, the Berkeley, the Emeryville-Oakland border. And so they can't be in the P-Bid, because that is consistent with the city boundaries, but they do pay according to the same rate. And so, for example, part of the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, like the Target, is a direct bill customer. And under the P-Bid law and the P-Bid management plan that was adopted by the city council after ratification by the commercial property owners who are assessed, the Emeryville Transportation Management Association is not just responsible for P-Bid's activities, but also makes the recommendation regarding the annual assessment after setting a preliminary budget. So part of this action today is also to accept their annual report. The full report was put into your packet. Just to briefly give you the highlights of it, the past 2013 service year, which is the calendar year 2013, total expenditures was $2.876 million, which is actually pretty flat from the previous year due to some efficiencies that were made with the coming of the new bus operator. Writership was up to 1.6 million writers per year, which is a 6% increase over 2012. And I forgot to mention that Ronnie Hattrick from the TMA has been here and is here to answer questions. The other big thing during 2013 was transitioning to a new bus operator and expanding service by adding two buses and also replacing two aging buses to improve service reliability. The TMA also conducted a service evaluation needs assessment, and also continued contracts for the eight-to-go dial-a-ride pair of transit that is paid for through ATC, Alameda County Transportation Commission funds and administered by the senior center. They run that shuttle for us. And also the West Berkeley Shuttle, which famously kisses with the immigrant ground at the West Berkeley Bowl. So for 2014-15, their service year is, again, the calendar year, for starting January 1st, is to expand bus service again by adding two buses and implementing some other route improvements to improve, to continue to replace the aging fleet. As part of route improvements, improving east-west connectivity, which is something that a lot of writers have wished for. The railroad tracks and I-80 make that challenging. To continue to maintain the 10-15-minute peak and 15-20-minute off-peak service, and work with the city to renew the P-Bid, which is, sun sets in 2016, and city has already started work with the TMA to start the process by which renewal would be requested to be, what needs a 15 ratification by the affected parcel owners in spring of 2015. So of course, the future challenge is to get the P-Bid renewal adopted, and then hopefully ratified by the council. To continue to increase ridership demands, there's a lot of new projects coming on in the next couple of years, and while they will generate additional operation revenue, the way the service is structured, it really doesn't, it doesn't really meet some of the needs for additional capital costs, rolling stock. So the TMA will be working with the city on that particularly and looking at some grants. And also, there's the continuing challenge of a long-term bus yard. So, the TMA is requesting a 2.5% P-Bid assessment levy over last year. Currently, it's easier to do it per thousand square feet. It's $256 per 1,000 square feet for office retail. For industrial warehouse, it's half that cost, or $128 per square foot currently. Residential is now $127.70, and this is for rental residential or those condominiums that have developer agreements to pay into the system. With the recommended increase, that would go to $262 per 1,000 square foot for the commercial retail, $131 per 1,000 square foot for industrial warehouse, or half of the commercial retail use. And for the residential units in the P-Bid or the condos that have developmental agreements, it'd be $130.89. And you can see that the estimated revenue that the recommended increase is not quite enough to pay for the proposed budget. So, the next slide shows the TMA's proposal to fund that gap. And that essentially is that in addition to the increase in revenue that would be gained by the adjustment to the assessment for 1415 and the direct bills, they have some minimal additional revenue through advertisements on the buses. They have a slight bit of surplus generated by their outside contract for the West Berkeley Shuttle. They also currently have a reserve of about $419,000, I think, and they are suggesting that they use a little bit less than half of that reserve to still maintain a 7% operating contingency. And if you remember earlier, as part of the fiscal year 2014-15, 15-16 adopted budget, the council did allocate $400,000 to support the immigrant ground, and so that they are planning on requesting $226,000 of that from the city, and that would give them enough money to pay for the show. And so staff recommendation is to approve the recommendation of the TMA. Staff would be bringing back the request for releasing the portion requested of that one-time-only money in late fall. Usually, it's November, December, when we get a finalized budget. Sometimes, you know, they have to do a preliminary budget to get it on the rolls. It's at the end of the year that they make their formal request for what they would, it's the resolution authorizing, releasing the P-Bid funds. At that point, they'll have a better idea exactly how much money that they may be requesting from that $400,000 that the city council allocated for their use. Any questions for me or for Ronnie Hattrick?
Let's hear from the public.
Yeah, Ken Bukowski from Emeryville Poppy Owners Association. We support the increase. We need to work together to accomplish $60 million from the transportation sales tax measure. Very doable, very possible. The stage has been set for that. It's going to require the immigrant ground having more contact with the Transportation Commission. They need to understand how the immigrant ground operates, how a P-Bid can be funded for operations, needs to be looked at. And you just have to establish a close working relationship. They have to know about you and know how you operate, and I would strongly urge that that contact happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You heard?
Actually, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Nora.
What is this $20,000 for marketing a free service? It seems like it's extraordinarily popular. What are we spending 20, what are you guys spending 20,000 bucks on?
I agree. 20,000 is a
I agree, 20,000 is actually kind of a low cost for marketing. We prepare the annual report, and the cost for preparing that report is the primary cost of the marketing.
Oh, that's...
The annual report that we produce every year.
So, it's the annual report?
Yeah, the annual report.
It might be wise to put annual report instead of marketing. And I might understand that Gray Bowen gets $310,000 for their services?
Correct, for the Emery Ground service, yes.
And how does that compare with other transportation services?
You mean in terms of...
Terms of administrative, administrative cost.
In terms of the percentage of an overall operating...
Exactly.
...expense, it's, it's in line, in line with others.
And, and you work on a one-year contract?
We have, currently have a one-year authorization. We have a three-year, a possible extension every year, but we don't get our funds authorized only annually.
And what other transportation outfits does Gray, does Gray Bowen administer?
We are currently running or starting another transportation management association for Mountain View. It's exciting, and then we also have some other efforts with getting through Caltrans rep, rep tape processes and working with local government.
I'd move approval of the report, the annual report, and I'd move approval of the resolution too.
I'd second that, both items.
Anyone opposed? No, okay.
Thank you for wading through this entire meeting.
Okay, 8.2.
We need to provide direction to staff on what type and how to conduct the community meetings at which the traffic calming measures for Horton Street would be discussed. This is the, our action on the Transportation Committee report.
I just, I have a question. I don't, I drive that road almost every day, I don't see very, very much activity on Horton Street, and I'm, just was wondering, I can't recall, and I know that there were some traffic studies that were done a number of years ago, but I just question how much traffic's going on that street, so.
Do you mean how many cars, automobiles?
Yeah, because...
Well, we have traffic counts that show it's more than...
It's exceeded the bike boulevard.
I, really, I...
Yeah, well, I know Maurice isn't here, but maybe...
It's hard to believe, I just...
We could shoot a gun down there most of the time.
Well, I think the real problem is Hollis, and so, I mean, if we had a stoplight in Hollis, I think that would expedite people going through, which would probably eliminate people taking Horton Street, so that was my other idea, because if we had a stoplight just one block from here, there's, that's where the traffic really kind of builds up.
Well, so in terms of providing direction to staff on a community meeting, how do we determine who are the users of Horton Street? We know we'll, we'll have a flood of the bicycle contingent out at the, at the community meeting, but how you reach those people who drive on that street, I haven't a clue, unless you have a big sign.
Well, the, the committee had actually two matters. The first one was item C on the traffic calming of Horton and where temporary diverters will be placed at Horton and 45th and at Horton and Stanford, and the committee is seeking the council's direction, how to solicit the input and the public notification on it.
Have we never installed temporary measures before?
So, we're reacting to the Triangle traffic calming incidents of several, before I was on the council.
Oh, I see, okay, I understand.
Right? I'm sure Nora could tell us about that.
I think what we typically would do in this case would be to notify all the adjacent property owners up and down Horton Street, such as Wareham and Novartis and Griffles and Sherwin-Williams and the Artist Co-op and everybody else who has property along there.
We have a process for...
Yeah, it would, we don't have a process for notifying people who drive through town, so I'm not sure how we would do that.
Well, we might be wanting to notify Amtrak people.
Uh, yeah, right, everybody who has property along Horton Street.
So, I think...
I mean, in, in other jurisdictions, I've seen signs posted on, you know, and I'm talking pretty good-sized signs of notice of a, you know, Transportation Committee meeting regarding X and the date of the meeting, so, I mean...
I think it'd be a very good idea to have a couple of those along Horton.
And I think the key, and we discussed this at the Transportation Committee, was to make sure that there was a time that was set aside where there was a study session before city council, if it was a Saturday morning, but to have a designated time where we would be able to reach people and have them come and share this, so it's not, you know, at 10:45 on a, on a long city council agenda. And it, it'll probably, what we're trying to do is to prepare a scope of work, because we already have funding to pay for engineers to look at designing this traffic calming, but we don't want to pay all the money and then get public input, we will need to do a little bit of both. But having some input, or is, am I incorrect, was it that we're designing at first and then getting public input? I'm actually forgetting because we discussed both.
Maurice knows.
And Maurice isn't here to...
We ought to get the public input first. How soon are we going to have this community meeting?
We wanted to do it in September, I thought was what we had suggested.
So, that means we have to get to work fairly soon to notify all the property owners and get the big signs to put on the, the...
Big signs. But I think what we, what we recommended, and maybe I'm confusing the B-PAC committee with the transportation, but that we recommended that, that the engineers, since we have this money to help pay for this design, that we would have them, this was the B-PAC recommendation, that we would have them actually design a diverter at 45th and Horton, design one at Stanford and Horton, and then other traffic calming measures in between, not that they would all be put in place until we heard from the public. That was the B-PAC's recommendation, but the Transportation Committee, which I think at this meeting, perhaps it was just me, was asking for council input on that.
You'll hear from the public after you put them in place.
No, I didn't say put them in place, I said design them, don't put them in place, but we have a certain amount of funds to pay for the engineering design, and sometimes it's hard for the public to know what it would look like until it's designed, you only have the concept otherwise, and, and what, what this would be and how it would be.
Are these diverters designed to be portable, or are they designed to be fixed in place permanently?
They're temporary.
They're temporary until...
Yeah.
Oh, very good.
So, it's a two-year kind of temporary measure.
I think signs and notifying people are...
And do we want to set a date in September, second Saturday in September?
Sure.
How to give direction, give direction.
Yeah.
I think I have a problem with that too, because, you know, a lot of people, we, we sometimes forget we have a commercial market here in town, and so most of those commercial people might not want to be here on a Saturday, so what, I would think you'd almost have to have two meetings, because of, you know, I meant, we do have commerce in the city, and so when you start talking about dividers and calming, we have a lot of traffic that has to get in town and out of town, and, you know, if we were constricting anymore, then we'd have traffic someplace else. So, all I'm saying is that we have industry in town that's still here, that I think we need to make sure that their voice is heard too.
Well, there's no doubt about that.
Maybe coming to the transportation meeting, since that's not on a weekend.
Well, 9:00 AM on a Tuesday, which is not convenient for...
Oh, it's 9:00 AM.
Yeah, that's not great.
Well, I think in some ways, that's more.
For the commercial interest, you could have it at the Transportation Committee meeting at 9:00 AM on a Tuesday, and then for the public, for the residents, you could have it the second Saturday in September.
I would prefer that, yes.
All right.
Okay, maybe because our Transportation Committee is the, is it the fourth Tuesday? Third or fourth Tuesday? I'm not remembering right now.
Fourth Tuesday.
Fourth Tuesday, maybe we could have it on the third or fourth Saturday, so that they're just close together.
Right, good.
That gives you another week. And clarifying whether that is with, I mean, I don't think we'd have engineering designs by that time, so it would be on the concept.
But we, we do want the big signs to put up there.
And I want to...
And Michael, you can prepare them because you're...
I see that we have public comment, but I want to make one other comment about this discussion that happened, which was that there was a safety manager from Federal Express who was there at our meeting, for a different item, actually, but it was, it was good that she was there, because we discussed how much direction is given to drivers as to routes, and that's one of the issues actually that comes up on Horton. Bicycle riders feel like delivery trucks go very quickly often on Horton, and it's, it goes straight to their facility on overland, and she hadn't heard that before and was excited to work with us, and I think was going to spend time with the police department talking about directing drivers in terms of routes, and so that was very exciting to me, also in terms of parking and loading zones and blocking bike lanes, et cetera, so it felt like we were kind of were starting a new conversation there, which could be very fruitful.
Well, it is 25 miles an hour, so I mean, if it's, if they're speeding down there, then we should have the officers down there writing tickets.
We can't do that unless we do a speed control table study.
Correct.
Yeah, we have to...
Really?
So, we can't do that.
And get a traffic unit.
We want, somebody wants to talk.
Okay.
Public comment?
Yeah, somebody goes. Couple of comments, I think first is a process problem. The staff applied for a grant without the approval of the council, so you got the grant approved, suppose the council didn't want to go ahead with it. You'd have egg in your face, and you might not get another grant in the future, so I don't think any grants should go anywhere without the approval or knowledge of the city council. Secondly, what is the problem we're trying to solve? We're going to put in diverters, we're going to disrupt everybody's life, for what? What is, what is the goal here? I mean, I, I don't see it, and you have approved development there, you have, you have approved projects, how does it impact those? Don't you have to do some kind of a study? I mean, those developments were approved based on a certain amount of traffic flow, well, if that can't happen, then, then, then how's it going to work? Are you really going to build Sherwin-Williams and now restrict the movement in the street? So, you're going to put all that traffic on Hollis, is that really a good idea? What purpose is, what are we trying to solve here? I just don't see the problem, and if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Can I just respond that council knew about the grant?
Our main north-south bicycle route through Emeryville is on Horton Street. Horton Street, just, this is a little anecdotal, but I think the traffic counts will get close to something like this, that, that bicycle and pedestrian traffic on Horton Street is now approaching 30% of vehicle trips, and the, the problem we're having is we're getting through traffic, driving especially north, at such a rate that it, it's becoming dangerous on Horton Street for bicyclists, and when you get traffic, especially at rush hour, going at a high speed, we're just, we're not making a friendly street through our city for bicyclists, and it's, it's an important thing for our region to have the, the route available as a throughway for cyclists to go through, especially into Oakland and through to Berkeley, and it's really a major route, and it's becoming more of a major route every year. And the problem with a bicycle boulevard, when you get a high volume of traffic on it, you get confusion about where the bicyclists ride and where the drivers are, and it's, it's key to have a slower street, and traffic calming, the next stage that our award-winning bicycle and pedestrian plan says would slow traffic down, would discourage a lot of through traffic, so we're not talking about stopping traffic, we're, we're talking about managing traffic, and that's what the purpose of this study is. And I think that the designs will show us a way to go forward where we'll be able to have automobile traffic, truck traffic, and bicycle and pedestrian traffic managed better than we currently have it, so that, that's the point of this. So, I really think we're going to proceed and go forward on it.
Thank you. Anyone else? No?
We provided direction.
We did that.
I'd like to approve the placement of the bicycle corral.
I'll second that.
All right.
Anyone opposed? Nope, okay. Communications and reports, department heads? Council members?
I went to the Alameda County Transportation Program and Projects Committee, and yes, it was quite exciting, but the exciting news is that every city has unanimously gotten behind the support of Measure B, and they're very excited about that. Alameda was the last one, that just happened, I believe, a couple of days before, so it's, it's rocking, it's rolling, and it looks like, hopefully, the energy is to get it passed. BB, baby B, yeah.
I'd like to share that I was at Love Our Neighborhood Day, and it was really wonderful. I had many people approaching me and asking me, why can't we do this more often? And I explained how much staff time and how many volunteers it took in order to accomplish that kind of successful event, but it, it was really wonderful. I, as I was there, I recognized myself that the architecture, the businesses, the buildings on San Pablo, I am not really familiar with, because I am just trying to get away from San Pablo or through, and so it was very nice to just have a more human-scale interaction with people and with the environment, and my children could not believe that they got to walk in the middle of the street, it was so novel for them. The other thing I want to share is that I, I went to the mayor's conference, and we had a presentation from Delbert G., who's a Superior Court Justice, and he let us know that because of the budget crunch around the judiciary in California, that many of the things that they do are now fee-for-service. For example, you have to pay for your own court reporter, or you may not have one, and so there are issues of equity and access, and it, it was pretty, pretty stunning, he did not have a happy tale to tell, and he, he wanted us to know that they're experiencing further cuts in their staff, that he has part-time people working with him, and their caseloads are, are very heavy, and so that, that makes things not only difficult for him, but really the administration of, of justice is impacted by all of this, so I just wanted to, to share that. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Very good.